Good afternoon, everybody. We are here in the City Council. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is our City Council meeting of June 19th, 2012. We're here at the City Hall Building located at 116 West Bridge Street. At this time, I'd like to invite Paul Gravely, our senior pastor at the Acton United Methodist Church, up to our podium to lead us in our invocation. If you would, please stand for the invocation. We'll follow that up with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, thank you for the chance to do your work. Pray for those that are here to make decisions on behalf of citizens of Granbury. Pray for your wisdom, for your love, and for your kindness. And ask all these things in the name of the Christ. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag, please.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state.
Please be seated. Council members and members of the audience, citizens of Granbury, it's my pleasure to bring out an indication that we have within us in our Finance Division, recipients of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is probably year number eight, I believe. Eight consecutive years for receiving this distinguished budget presentation. It's awarded each year by the Government Finance Officers Association. And this year, it's being presented to Wayne McKethan, the City Manager, and our new Assistant Finance Director, Ava Gregory. Congratulations. Well, council members, I would like you to make notation that we did not receive any consent agenda items. If you'll remember, our City Secretary was out on a City Secretary Conference. Last time, we had a meeting and we had a substitute in. As such, there was no consent agenda first to consider, which brings us down to item number one in our deliberation agenda. Item number one, consider and adopt a resolution creating the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust, approving of the Declaration of Trust and approving the initial transfer of certain assets to the trust. Just a little background on what this is about. An Employees Benefit Trust is a nonprofit trust that will actually allow the city to eliminate a 1.75% state premium tax that carriers that are asked to provide service for this trust, for our insurance, for our employees, would have to pay. By forming the trust, the state of Texas allows the insurance carriers to not have to cover that trust. And as a result, it could be some $4,000 per year. Is that correct, sir? A $20,000 per year savings for the trust fund itself when it comes to gathering insurance companies from the Texas State Insurance Pool. But before we can do that, council members, we're going to need to approve the formation of the trust. So you'll see in your packet that we have a resolution. And that resolution would allow the city to form said trust. And then following the vote on that resolution, whether it's approved or not approved, we'll proceed to the next action. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Mayor, may I ask a question of you before we get through the voting?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, and this is about item one and item two, because you did see how they're together. I had some interest over this actual City Council agenda item. And the clarification that I'd like for you to make, and I knew the answer to it, and I gave this answer out as many times as I could, but I wanted to make sure that it went on the record, is that by the City Council doing this, this is about saving our taxpayers' money. And in no way does this give the City Council the benefit of the insurance. I just want to make sure they understand that.
That's correct. This is not about the City Council members getting on to the insurance at no cost whatsoever. It will still be available if council members want to partake in this insurance. Right now, the city has its own city-served pool of insurance. And what we're seeking right now is moving on to finding an outside carrier to carry the city employee insurance.
Thank you, Mayor.
So once again, I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve said resolution for creation of the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Need a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding the resolution? All in favor of said resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. At this time, we will recess our regular council meeting. And we will open the meeting for the trust resolution. This will be a call to order for the Employee Benefits Trust meeting. This is now June 19th, 2012. And I will call this meeting to order. At this time, we'll consider and approve the Declaration of Trust. Counselor, can you enlighten us as to what that is referring to, please, sir?
The Declaration of Trust is the document that was attached to the resolution. You can think of it kind of like the Articles of incorporation. If this was a corporation, it sets out who the trustees are, the powers of the trustees, and what the powers of the trust are. And it was attached in your packet as the attachment to the resolution that was just passed by council.
Yes, you'll find it in your packet as Exhibit A. At this time, does anybody have any questions regarding the Declaration of Trust? In it, you'll find that it highlights the creation of the trust, stating that the city is known as the settler or creator of the trust. It designates the members of the City of Granbury City Council to be the trustees. It also states out the officers. The officers will serve as, the mayor, I should say, will serve as the chairman, preside over all the meetings. The mayor pro temp shall serve as vice chair and shall proceed when the chairman is not present. And the secretary will begin with the council person sitting in place two for the first fiscal year and will skip over the mayor or the mayor pro temp's position as it rotates around. The secretary will oversee the preparation of meeting agendas, giving notice of meetings of the trust and the minutes of the meetings. There's compensation section, of which the trustees shall be reimbursed for all reasonable and necessary expenses incurred by them in the performance of their duties. Otherwise, they would receive no compensation. Meetings can be called by any trustee or the chairman or written request by two or more trustees. Any questions regarding any of this?
Yes, Mayor, I had one question as I reviewed it. I wanted to ask for clarification from you or the city attorney on that section about reimbursement. And understanding that this is a entity purely for the savings of the 1.75% that works out with our employees now to be around $20,000 a year. I think it's a great thing to do and a great tool and a resource. I'm just questioning why that in-house internal board trust would need to have a clause about reimbursement. As I went through this, I thought for a few days, would we need to be taking trips under this trust? That would be more like a council action. So I would just like some clarification on that.
I put that in there just in the incident that the Board of Trustees does need to travel somewhere to meet with the insurance provider. Maybe you have to go to Fort Worth to do that, or Dallas. It would allow you to be able to, as a trustee, to recoup your travel expense. Similar policy to what we have with the city offices.
Let me ask you, that's a good point. And I agree in that, in fact, when I read this, the trustees are in fact city councilman elected folks. And couldn't that same individual turn in a receipt for gas or for a meal or whatever that expense was and get reimbursed under our current policy that we have in place?
I would think that if you're going to take an action that involves health insurance, that you would do that as a trustee of the trust governing the health insurance as opposed to the city council member who doesn't legally buy insurance to trust by.
I would really like to see that we, if all, if the colleagues agreed, and I'm not going to make a huge issue out of it, but that we would take that clause out because we are wanting the same, we're the city, we're city councilman, whoever comes after us, it's the same scenario. Obviously, we're just paying the bill out of this trust, which I understand that saves us $20,000. But again, I'm just trying to make sure that it looks like that we're way above reproach and we don't have a clause in there. So now these trustees can go out and spend this money and doing this trip and all that sort of thing. We just went through that with the last couple agendas ago. So I would just ask my colleagues, is there any support in removing that one clause and going forward with this?
I would just like to remind everybody here on the council that this is the trust that would be needing to send somebody off if they even needed to. It's not the City Council to be actually administering the dollars and being a representative for the city when they're going out there. They're trying to bring back information. Not that it's even going to happen. So far, we've actually had our HR department deal with everybody concerning this particular trust item. And there has been no need to go outside on any trips. But like any business, there may come a time in the future that you might have to.
And the mayor, the reason I brought it up is because we already have one shell corporation we call Granbury Historical Properties. And in fact, that corporation has money in the bank in the tune of about $300,000. And I understand if that person needs to travel and that sort of thing. In this trust situation, I want to ask our finance and city manager, is there any way that this trust would form revenue that would be held in a bank account somewhere?
It's not planned that way.
That's correct.
We're simply going to flow the premiums into this account and pay the insurance company.
And again...
There's no plans to have extra.
So that money, am I correct, Mr. Finance Director and City Manager, that that money would have to be budgeted in a city budget? Anything that was spent by that trust, where would that money come from if there was going to be a trip? Wouldn't it come out of the city funds?
It would probably have to, but we'd probably, just to try to keep it separate, if you were wanting to charge it to the trust, it'd probably transfer that money into the trust just because it's doing something for the employees.
And again, I'm just concerned about it is city money, us doing that as a trust and having that...
We can do it either way. We can either pay it out of the city.
You could do it as a city, yes.
We could do it as a city, or we could transfer the money into the trust to keep it segregated. It's not, it's not going to be a big...
And again, I'd like to hear from the colleagues. If there's no support in there, I'm willing to step back.
Well, let's see if anybody else wants to discuss it. We have a motion, we have a second on the floor, and this is time to discuss this formation of the trust and the Declaration of Trust.
Is this a fairly common occurrence now? Is this a boilerplate type of instrument that we're looking at here? Is this trust provision been tested in the courts? Have we seen that the courts have ruled in favor of these trusts and the aberration of this tax?
There's other municipalities in our surrounding area that are actually operating under the same type of trust. The City of Stevenville currently does it, as does a few others. Maybe we can call up the HR person who put this item on our agenda.
Let me say one thing. The reason we never went to this is when we were self-funded, it would have only applied to our stop-loss premium, which really wasn't worth messing with, okay? Once we go to full service, we're going to have well over $1 million premium, probably $1,300,000 premium. So it is worth it when you get 1.75%. Yeah. Because they have stop-loss premiums, which is 1/5, 1/6 of that. It just wasn't worth $200,000.
Dr. Sanders, if you could sort of enlighten us as to what you found in your explorer... I mean, you went out and explored this option that we have before us, is that correct?
I did. My initial experience was at the City of Stevenville with this program. They had instituted it just a few months before I was hired as their HR manager there. And it did save us about $20,000 to $25,000 a year, depending on the premiums. I believe Wichita Falls also does it. There's just several in the region. It's not, not every city does it. It's really at your pleasure. It's just a way that I saw for us to save some money in a place where we really needed to save some money. And it's paperwork. We have an in-house attorney who is an expert at doing that kind of paperwork. And so it's a little bit of an inconvenience for us, but we save a lot of money for a little bit of inconvenience.
Any other questions from council members on this?
Mayor, I have one. Kind of remark you made was that if we need to send somebody out of town, it's probably going to be one of our staff anyway.
Most likely.
More, most likely. Therefore, I don't have a problem with it being in or being out. I'm like Mitch on the head of Mr. Tyra. But my deal is on it is if this money, the $1 million you're talking about there, going to be the policy, is that going to be through the city or is that going to be through a separate account there, Wayne?
Is it actually a payment?
Yes. Does it got to come through the trust fund?
Well, yes, it will go through the trust. The trust will actually own the policy. I mean, they will actually have gotten the policy there. So we're going to pay, we're going to take the premiums out of the paycheck of employees and ourselves. We're going to pay for employees. And then we're going to send it to the trust. And the trust is going to send it to the head office.
Will it be a different account, Wayne? What I'm saying is...
Yes, it will definitely be...
It will be separated.
I mean, $20,000, a lot of money. I agree with you. But if it's going to cost us more in paperwork and... Okay, that was my concern.
No, it's an automated function. It'll just flow. I mean, we have like Transamerica and other things that we also send premiums to.
Sure.
It's just a process.
Sure, it's to you. On our Granbury Historical Properties Board, which I said on it, it was Mitch and the mayor, we don't have a travel expense on that day, we are not.
There's a similar provision to this one that is in the bylaws of that corporation.
We could take travel for that.
Yeah. I don't want to talk too much about Granbury Historical Properties because that's not on the agenda. But to answer your direct question, yes.
I understand, but I'm just not trying to compare why do we really need this or why we don't.
It's a standard clause.
It's standard language in most nonprofits organizations in order to create them. And basically, it just says that should the need arise, you can be compensated. But whether that need is a regular thing or not, I don't think that's what anybody's trying to do. I'm not trying to get the city to pay for me to go anywhere.
And I don't think, I don't think that anybody's made that accusation. I just appreciate what Mickey said. I want to make sure my colleagues understand I support the trust. It's going to save us over $20,000 a year. So I'll move that we accept the trust and approve it as it is with the removal of C compensation.
Then you ought to have a motion and a second on the table.
No, not on this one, that was on the first. We've not had a motion.
Yeah, I made a mistake when I said we had a motion and a second.
So I got a motion, then on the floor.
So your motion is to approve the Declaration of Trust with the removal of all of...
Item C. Yeah, it's actually four C.
Item four, C.
Four C compensation.
Second.
So we have a second from Tony Allen. Any other discussion regarding this particular item?
Mayor, I got a question to the attorney there on this compensation. Does that allow, you know, Mr. Tyra down there, does that allow the compensation of somebody, for instance, as the council person becomes the trustee here and goes to a meeting, then they actually have a regular job also, and they said, hey, I would like to be compensated for lost wages?
No, because as a trustee, you don't get any break.
You don't want to be compensated for lost wages of their normal job?
No, I don't think that that would be a reasonable and necessary expense on the performance of the duty of a trustee.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Our process will not change one iota going forward at the trust. The HR department will still handle all of the bidding process. We will still handle all the recommendation with the help of the city manager and the finance department. All that will change for you is this process where you recess the council meeting and go into the trustee meeting, make the decision, and then reset and end the trust meeting and go into the council meeting.
And I think that the employee just made it very clear what Tony stated. Staff will be doing these things. So let's be way above reproach, remove the compensation. That way, we won't worry about it ever taking place. Very well spoken.
Chris, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
With your experience, you don't actually see it will. How can they help meetings for this trust anyway?
Once a year.
Yes, so I mean, either way. I second the motion, I'll leave it there.
Well, right now, what we have is we have a motion to approve the Declaration of Trust along with the omission of item 4C. Calling for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. The next item up for consideration by us is the adoption of the City of Granbury Investment Policy as the investment policy for the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust. As you've heard, we've already discussed the fact that the city currently has a self-funded program, which means that we've got money sitting out there. And the whole purpose of this is to reinvest this money into a policy that will allow us to move forward to where we have an outside entity taking on our insurance. And that's the purpose of this policy. Can you clarify that for me, counselor?
If the trust was to have money in its accounts, you need to be able to invest that money in a interest-bearing account or otherwise. And so I worded this item on your agenda so that you would use the exact same investment policy that you used for the City of Granbury.
Mayor, just will you clarify me? We approved the contract, didn't we, with item number two?
No, we haven't have...
So you're saying...
That contract, that contract, by the way, was in there in case we did not go with this procedure. In other words, should we have decided not to form the trust and the City of Granbury, through the council, would make a contract for the employee health insurance benefits? As such, we have formed the trust meeting, and the meeting of the trust board will now negotiate and discuss health insurance benefits for the employee.
Okay, so yeah, so do we have an agenda for the trust?
It's the red portion of the agenda.
Okay, so that's...
That's what that red portion is.
So we're still on agenda item one?
You're on letter B of the red portion.
Got you, now I see, okay.
We're on part B right now.
Got you, now I got you.
Okay.
Part B?
Yeah, we're on B. We're considering and approving adoption of the City of Granbury Investment Policy. In other words, it's the same investment policy that the City of Granbury is currently utilizing for the investment policy for the Employee Benefits Trust.
But I heard the city manager say something. I just need a clarification on that.
I didn't hear what he said. Could you repeat that, Mr. City Manager?
About the money held? I mean, we're talking about the trust we just formed has no money in it. But you want to create a policy just in case it has money in it? Okay, I got you. There's no money anywhere that's going to be placed in trust.
Right, we're going to set up a separate checking account.
Yes.
And so if we do that, if there were money in it, we need to hold people responsible for what's in it.
It will have money in it. It's got to have, the trust has to have...
It'll be run-through money, I got you.
The trust is going to receive all the money that's currently in the self-funded plan.
Well, see, that's what concerns me.
You see what I'm saying? That money has...
May I speak to that? Actually, those funds that remain in the self-funded plan will be used to fund the runoff claims.
The what?
The runoff claims.
Runoff claim.
That are left when we finish our self... We should spend every dime of that.
Well, that's what I want to clarify. That's where I was getting a little bit confused. And so, Mayor, just I have some questions concerning that.
Well, let's just clarify that somehow you've got to get the monies out of this self-funded pool. And you've got to get it to the insurance company. Is that not how we're dealing with this?
I don't move those funds from the self-funded. We're not moving, so it's not going to this account.
No, it's not going into that account.
Okay, you were indicating that it was...
No, we're going to be using those funds to fund, to finance the runoff claims. And so it's got to stay in the self-funded.
We're going to be using it out of the separate checking account that's in self-funded, not this one.
We cannot use self-funded for this purpose. It has to be...
I think it's a misunderstanding how you said it. It sounded like we were going to move those funds.
No, we are not going to move those funds.
We're only going to put premiums in this account.
That's correct.
And this whole account is, and we're going to set up a policy. You want a policy in this account, which is great, investment policy in this account. Just for that purpose, which is great, hold it accountable. But this account is for pass-through to pay the premiums, period. It is. The money that was spoken of, and I think the mayor mentioned it as well, that's sitting in that self-funded account. How much is in that account right now?
As of the 11th, there was $198,942 left in that account.
And our runoff's been estimated around $200,000?
It's going to be very close.
Now, when you talk, so you're talking about that those are reserves held on the claims we initially already have?
Yes.
So we believe those claims that are outstanding, that this $198,000 will close those out?
Close those out.
And somebody in the insurance industry has looked at that and made sure those reserves are solid enough to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thanks for all the clarification. Because I'm thinking one thing, and Councilman Tyra is following it. It helps to have you in the insurance business, doesn't it, Councilman? All right, so anyway, we do need some sort of an investment policy. And as such, that's why we have this adoption of the City of Granbury Investment Policy as the process through which the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust would be utilizing. Entertain a motion to adopt the City of Granbury Investment Policy.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons. Need a second on it. Second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion regarding that? All in favor of approving?
I do have a question, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilman Allen?
All right, this, and I may be repeating what Mr. Tyra said, this investment, if all we're going to do is transfer funds from one account to the other to pay this deal, what's going to be in this investment deal other than that money?
Nothing. I mean...
When do, I mean, when do we need that?
Well, in case something was in there, we want to have a policy that would, that would cover it. We're just trying to make it the same investment policy as the city so that there's no question if there was some money left in there, what should be done with it. It would be an error, it would be something that happened that caused it to stay there. But we need to have a policy if it happens.
And that could happen by underpaying or overpaying a policy?
Yeah, it could have anything.
It could happen by an out of operation, and it's paying bi-weekly and...
Oh, yeah, there's going to be a time where there's two or three days that'll be sitting in there. And we just don't want any misunderstanding as to what should be done.
The word investment to me means...
We're going to leave it in the account. We're not going to...
I understand, but the word investment means like you're going to take that money and invest it to make more money.
We're not going to do that.
It is a fair statement.
We're not going to do it while I'm here, I'll...
It is a fair statement. This will help us in our audit. It will have a cleaner audit because of this. We have a backup policy for this fund.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Calling for the question, all in favor of approval of the adoption of the City of Granbury Investment Policy by the City of Granbury Employees Benefit Trust. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Our next part is consider and approve the designation of the depository for the City of Granbury Employees Benefits Trust as the same depository utilized by the City of Granbury. Once again, this is a way of allowing the finance department to keep track of the Employee Benefits Trust dollars, should there be any. And we hear that there will be. As each employee receives a check, there's a portion of that check that is allocated to insurance. And as such, the monies have to be routed through some sort of a depository. And the recommendation was to utilize the same one And the recommendation was to utilize the same one as one used by the City of Granbury. Entertain a motion to approve and designate the same depository for the one for the Benefits Trust.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moves this to part D, consider and approve the designation of certain signatories for the City of Granbury's Employees Benefits Trust. Now, Stuart, this is where I need to call you back in as legal counsel. If the board consists of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and one council person, how do we get around the fact that these are the officers of the trust, and are they the authorized signatories for this?
Somebody's got to sign the checks, Mayor, so you have to pick who your signatory's going to be on your bank account, that's what this is.
And does it have to be one of the officers, or can it actually be somebody that's in the city's finance department?
No, it has to be a trustee.
All right. So with that being said, my second question would be, should we have double signatories? In other words, two signature lines at the bottom of the checks?
Probably not that guy.
In the best interest, okay. All right, so now I entertain some sort of a motion to designate who the signatories are for the City of Granbury Employees Benefits Trust.
Mayor, would you read that, who's on that board?
The, the chair is the mayor, the vice chair is the mayor pro tem, and then place two, which I believe is you, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
So you currently would be an officer, you're the secretary for the trust.
My only concern is-
Twice a month, yeah.
I know, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, I do payroll, I sign my own checks, it's the best one.
It's only one check.
It's going to happen electronically, you'll have to go to the bank one time and sign a signature card.
No, no, you're signing the check that-
That's fine, I-
Or whoever it may be.
That's exactly, I have no problem with whoever signs it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, if you want to put a motion out there as to who would be the signatory for that.
Let me make it easy on him.
Yeah.
I move that we appoint as the signatures, Mr. Tony Allen and Mr. Mickey Parson.
I think we need to designate it as their positions, not so much as the individual. In other words, it would be the vice chair and the secretary, I believe is what you're referring to.
All right, then let me change that motion to the vice chair and the secretary.
Okay, we have a motion to authorize the vice chair along with the secretary of the Employees Benefits Trust to be the authorized signature for that trust. Need a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion, hang on, did I hear a nay?
Yeah.
We heard two nays, that motion still carries a majority. Wait a minute, hang on a second, I got to talk to Counselor.
We may have a way to resolve this, Mayor, I didn't realize there would be an issue, but I appreciate the outspokenness of the councilman that sits to my right, that the concern is, and rightly so, that there's three people in this trust, we might as well put all three of them on there. So, you know, whatever we need to do to go ahead and override that last motion and vote, let's get it done, because that makes sense. In that way, if somebody's out or if something happens, at least we have three signatures there, and then two of y'all would have to sign, that makes a lot of sense. And I'll be glad since I made the motion.
Well, all I can tell you is we've already voted on that particular motion, so we can entertain another motion to recall that particular vote.
Yeah, let me move that we recall that last motion and that last vote.
All right, so we have a motion to recall the, and reconsider the last vote by Mr. Tyra, need a second, please?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Parson. Any further discussion?
I don't.
He can still second this, this is not a council meeting, this is a meeting of the trust. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Now then, if you'd like to create a new motion for who you want to designate as the signatures, of which I would recommend we still retain at least two signatories.
Mayor, I just moved that we go ahead and approve the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary as designated signatories for the City of Granbury Employees Benefit Trust, and that at any time, two of those have to sign the checks, or whatever the two policy signature is. Let's have all three of you on the card.
All right, we have a motion, need a second. Anybody willing to second that motion?
I'm saying-
All right, we have a second by Mr. Allen. Now, we have a motion on the floor to authorize all three officers of the Granbury Employees Benefits Trust. Let's go into some discussion if we need to now.
So we're going to have three signatures, two required, is that what I'm-
Two required, yes, sir.
And we're not, we're not going to have city employees that are already the designated signatories on this account, and then just either have a second signature or no second signature. Why, what's your understanding of the question for council, why are we having council sign checks, I guess?
Well, you've got to remember, you're not serving as the role of a councilman right now, you're serving as a member of the Board of Trustees, and all of your city employees are beneficiaries, including your finance staff. So it would seem inappropriate to have beneficiary signing a check drawn on a trustee account.
Seems inappropriate, but not illegal or wouldn't be unusual for a trust to have a signature.
I think it would be unusual.
We have, we have personal insurance for this trust.
You could be covered by this insurance, yes, sir. As a council member, you have the right, as an officer of the city, Councilman, as an officer of the city, which you serve on the council, you do have the option of participating in this insurance.
I'm talking about liability insurance if-
Yes, there is an error and omission insurance, there's also some, what was the other waiver that I saw about the officers?
The record office. You know, there's an indemnity.
Thank you, indemnity clause in there. So with that being said, we still have a motion, and it is, has been second to authorize all three of the officer board, the chairperson, the vice chair, and the secretary as an authorized signature, with two of them being required on each one of the checks for the City of Granbury Employees Benefits Trust. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Part E, consider and approve the authorization of the annual auditors for the City of Granbury to conduct an audit for the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust. Once again, hopefully, we can utilize the same avenue that the City of Granbury is currently using for any form of audit for the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust without having to have a different company audit the employees' trust as opposed to the City of Granbury. Entertain a motion to approve authorization of the same auditors for the City of Granbury to conduct an audit. We have a motion by Mr. Perkel. And who else, and need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding the use of cities' auditors as those for the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust? Calling for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Last but not least, part number F, consider and approve a contract for employee health insurance benefits. Kristy, could you please tell us what's out there, what you've brought forward to us, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir, I have a PowerPoint here. And the first slide, just to give you a little bit of a background on why we feel it's important to move to the fully insured from the self-funded, this is our large claimant report. If you'll notice, we have six people in this report that are over our $40,000 stop-loss max. Basically, what this means is that our stop-loss carrier was losing money on us every year. We had other people who were over this threshold as well, but these were the maximum claims, and as you can see, they're fairly high, some as high as $191,000, so fairly high claims. Basically, due to our claims experience for the last 21 months, our stop-loss carrier has lost $629,000 on our pool. So in order to continue with HCC, it would have cost us an additional $677,000 a year to continue with that, and we just didn't feel like that was something we could even talk about. So, we looked at several different self-funded options, the best carrier was Texas Municipal League, even at as low as their premiums were, their quote was, compared to the other carriers, it still was going to be an increase of $377, nearly $378,000. So we decided that it was definitely time to look at the fully insured option. And as I stated, our fund balance, as of 6/11, is $198,942, which provides us with enough funding to pay the expected runoff claims remaining in the self-funded plan. There will be some, some claims outstanding that we will have to pay for, and that should take care of that for us. So then we come to our fully insured options, I know the PowerPoint is very small, I got it as big as I could get it and make it work, but after reviewing all the bids, the proposals from Aetna were the most competitive. The monthly rates shown here include a 2% rate reduction. Aetna came back after we told them we were going to institute the Employee Benefit Trust, and they said, okay, great, we'll give you 2% instead of 1.75%. So we took it, and the approval of this trust this year, based on the bids that we received, will save us $22,591.34 this year. Aetna additionally offered us a $75,000 credit to be used towards our first or second month's bill, which brings our total out-of-pocket expense for health insurance down to $1,031,969, which is considerably lower than it has been in the past several years. This actually represents a savings of $117,856 over last year's premiums at the expected claim level. Since we have exceeded our expected claim level, that, the savings is actually even higher than that. So we are looking at a savings of $117, nearly $118,000 over last year's premiums. So, question?
Yeah, I had, I had a question.
We'll let you proceed, then we'll-
Okay. So our recommendation is to choose Aetna as a fully insured plan. We would actually like to change things up a little bit and offer our employees two plans this year. The plan that we've chosen, the initial, and we'll call it our base plan, still has a $500 deductible, it's almost identical to the plan that we are currently on, except that there are no hospital confinement fees. In addition, it's not an employee plus one, or employee plus two, or employee plus three on this type of plan. For example, if an employee has employee children coverage, they can cover one child or 10 children for the same price. So that's a real big benefit to the employees that cover dependents. The cost of the employee coverage is $613 at the $500 level. That is an increase per employee of $6 per employee to the city. But it does keep the deductible at $500, there are no confinement fees for hospital stays, so it's a true $500 deductible. And we felt like to keep that $500 deductible, that was a very small increase. Overall, it is going to be a decrease as far as savings, but there is a slight increase on this particular premium.
It's actually an improvement in the plan.
It is an improvement in the plan.
Or an active improvement.
Yes. And then the second plan is actually a $1,000 deductible plan, and what we talked about doing is, if the city council funds the $613 per employee, but I'm willing as an employee to take on the extra $500 risk, because I would like to cover my children with health insurance. So we'll take the difference between that $613 and the $567, which is $40, and we'll apply that towards my dependent deductible. So it gives the employees another option, puts a little more risk on them, but if they're willing to take that risk, it can save them substantially. If you look at the employee family coverage under the Aetna 1,000 plan, an employee with family coverage can save $273 a month on this plan over their current plan. And that's a substantial impact to employees in their, in their paychecks every month. So we wanted to give them these two, these two plans to choose from if an employee chooses a, if an employee has no dependent coverage, they will be automatically placed on the $500 deductible plan. We want to limit that risk, if they're not going to have any dependents, we're going to limit that risk for them. But if they choose to have dependents, then they can choose to, to take the risk on themselves.
And let me say, since the city pays for the employee, there's no reason for the employee to take on more risk.
That's right.
Because he doesn't get any, any benefit from premiums.
I mean, it makes sense, so anyone would choose, you know, $500.
Unless they were going to cover dependents, there's no reason for them to-
If they had no dependents.
That's correct.
We, this, by getting the self-enrolled, self-funded plan out from underneath the city, it also helps us out with future healthcare issues across the nation, the nationwide healthcare issue that's being debated now in the Supreme Court, if I understand right.
That was another significant risk with staying, remaining self-funded, is we don't know what's going to happen with that, and the Supreme Court could come out any day now and say, here's what you have to do, and if we're self-funded, then we have to take on whatever they say. If we're fully insured, we're locked into a contract and we don't have to worry about it.
Right.
It was, it was time to switch.
Okay, so at this point, we're getting a recommendation from staff that we should be choosing a contract with Aetna, is that what, what your recommendation is?
Mayor, I have some questions.
Now, now then, we're going to get a little bit of questions back to you regarding this. All right, Mr. Tyra, lead the charge, sir.
Hey, Kristy, going over this, and those numbers were pretty small, and we got this late, and, and so let me just ask a few questions to clarify, because as I looked at the numbers, last year, our employees, and in my, I come rec, I think the city manager just said it, the city 100% funds the employee.
Yes, sir.
And last year, under our self-funded program, it cost us $607 premium per month.
Yes, sir.
And this year, and we're going to pay the additional $6, and we're going to keep doing 100% funding for the employee, so this year will be $613 to the city.
Yes, sir.
So us paying that additional money, and how many employees we have?
About 140.
Yeah, about 140. So I had a hard time trying to figure out how that was a savings, and just using those numbers, okay, because we're going to be paying 140 times six, which is additional money. So just explain to me how we will receive that savings back.
Well, the savings is in the overall plan, and when you're talking about, you're comparing apples to oranges when you're talking about self-funded to fully insured, you can't, you can't give the estimate based off of self-funded and what claims may or may not come in. We're really working off of rough numbers on, on the self-funded as to what might happen. And so when you fund the premiums, you're still working off of a guesstimate of what it might be. And so that's what we did, they made the best, best guess, and they decided what the premium was going to be. With fully insured, we know exactly what the premium is going to be, and whatever risk there is, this, it's not going to fall on the city, it's going to fall on the insurer.
Yes, when we go back to the self-insured, you're right, you're not comparing apples to apples, you're comparing apples to oranges or whatever. But we need to be able to say to our employees and to the public that the fact is, the premiums went up in tune of $6.
The premiums went up on employee-only coverage.
And each month, the city is going to fund that $6, we're going to eat that for our employees, times 140. So the savings is something you can talk about, but it's not really what we're holding in our hand. Each month, we're holding an additional cost in our hand, and we feel like-
Correct.
To our, to, right now, as we speak, and as we understand.
If you were looking at, Ava just said, you know, our claims are going up, so if we were looking at remaining self-funded, our premiums would have gone-
Well, that, that's the point I want to make, here, let me say this, you're exactly right. We're going to pay more in premiums, and this is the best thing for us, because that reserve we talked about that had $198,000 in it, that's coming out of our pocket, and as those costs go up, that's going to be more money that we're going to have to pay toward that. So we get you there, I just don't want to talk about a savings when in fact our premiums are going up. We understand the savings going from self-insured to a fully insured, but our premiums are going up, and I want to make sure everybody understands that.
They are.
Yeah, but our premium would have been-
It would have been $844 if we would have stayed, $844 if we would have stayed-
$844, because our stop-loss doubled because the man lost, or the company lost $600,000 in the last 21 months, so.
We had no choice.
We had no choice.
We would, we could, we could not stay self-insured.
No, at this point.
Any other questions?
The only way that we could, in effect, save the money and show it reflected in the premium is by forcing all of the employees to go to the $1,000 deductible plan. We could do that, but that, that puts that extra $500 a year on the employee, and that's a lot of money.
Or employees could, you know, we could fund partial, like a lot of private corporations, and then the employee pick up a percentage of that, that's very common in the private world. I hope we never have to go there.
I hope not to.
Any other questions for Dr. Sanders?
Mayor, I've got one.
All right.
First, I'm dumb in a lot of things, with insurance, I'm the dumbest. So, I argue every time that one of my wife or I go to the doctor, and we got to fill out all kind of paperwork and pay $5 for our insurance, but, only still here, I'm looking kind of paperwork and pay $5 for our insurance. But on this deal here, I'm looking at it. It's under price slide number two on yours, guessing. Medical plan options?
Self-funded option?
That's it right there.
The self-funded or the fully insured?
No, fully insured.
Okay.
I'm hoping I'm looking the right thing here, and I apologize to the people out there, but we didn't receive this till late. And I glanced at it, but I didn't have...I do have some questions.
Okay.
Do you look under the current GPA, HCC?
Yes, sir.
All right. You go down here where it says 90/70, and then underneath there, it says 1,500 slash 2, 2,500. Under that, 3,000.
Yes, sir.
You go over to this other one. It's the same money for the one you're picking out for, the $500 deductible.
Yes, sir.
But if you go to 1,000, it jumps to 10,000.
For a family out-of-pocket max. Yes, it does. There is an increased risk to the employee to take on that $1,000 deductible.
Yeah.
There is a substantial maximum out-of-pocket. For me personally, I would take the risk. My children are healthy and short of a catastrophic accident. Where $3,000 would be a drop in the bucket. I'm not worried about it. But some employees might be worried about it. They might not be able to come up with $3,000.
That's right. Yeah, I just don't, you know, whenever you or whoever claims to them, make sure they understand that.
Absolutely.
If they have to come out $10 out of your pocket.
Part of that educational process also includes encouraging employees to use the flexible spending account to help offset the cost of deductibles and out-of-pocket expenses to the extent available to them.
And also, their Madison deals are higher.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I don't want to sit here and say, "I'm saving $10 a month, or $20 a month, or whatever it could be on the family." And then, all of a sudden, somebody gets sick, and, you know, we're living payday to payday.
Absolutely.
Then, that could be a bad, bad financial deal on them.
Before any employee makes a decision to go with the higher deductible plan, they're going to go through a counseling process individually where we discuss all of these options with them.
No, I think y'all did a great job on this. I don't know much better insurance, so I might just bet.
And I can tell you, we rejected some options, some costs up and had went to 20,000, 25,000, possible. And we've got down as low as we've guessed.
Well, I had it happen on a $10,000.
And I will tell you, the reason that it was late coming to y'all is because as of 4:00 yesterday afternoon, we were still having two companies wibble back and forth about which we could get the best deal because we were...
But we saved $75,000.
We saved $75,000, so...
I'm not drafting that.
You know, it's worth it.
All right. That's all I can say.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Sanders?
Dr. Sanders, is this a...is that a year-to-year contract?
Yes, sir.
That is the only rate that they have, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Sanders.
I also have Skip here, Skip from Brinson Benefits. If you have any questions for him, he's our consultant. He knows a lot more about it than I do. So, if you have any really in-depth questions...
I think we've had all of our answers given by you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Got to wait that week.
All right. So, at this time, let's consider and approve a contract with Aetna for employee health insurance benefits. I need to entertain a motion to do so, though.
Don't move, Mayor.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of a contract for health insurance benefits for the City of Granbury Employees Benefits Trust through the Company of Aetna? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. This time, we'll adjourn the meeting of the City of Granbury Employees Benefits Trust and reconvene the City Council meeting. As you heard, item number two was only in there in case there was a decision not to approve the City of Granbury Benefits Trust formation. So, we will be moving over that item, moving on to item number three. Consider and approve extension of the city's contract with George Morgan &amp; Sneed CPAs for an annual audit services for an additional three-year period ending September...should I say, beginning on September 30th, 2012, and continuing through for the fiscal years 2011, 2012, 2012, 2013, and 2013 through the 14. Each one of these years ends on September 30th of 2012, 2013, and 2014. Our city charter requires that we have an outside independent auditor. The current contract with George Morgan &amp; Sneed was in its last one-year extension. It was originally a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. We have seen that through to fruition, and as such, it is time to take on either a new CPA firm for audit services or renegotiate with George Morgan &amp; Sneed for three more fiscal years. I was talking about this, as to whether or not this should be an item that's put out there and bid upon. And, you know, one thing I noticed about our audit services, they grill our departments pretty well, as we've heard from some of the audits as we've sat on council. And I think they're doing a great job. By having this same firm continue with the audit service, it also helps to benefit our finance department as well as our department heads because the routine that we are running under revamped with each year that these guys continue to oversee the audit. They have made some suggestions through the time that I've served on council here, and I would like to recommend that we might want to stay with them. What we have here is a financial consideration of a 4% increase to a $36,500 per year agreement with each individual audit being at $4,000. Is that right, Mr. Manager? It's a $4,000 per individual audit? And as we just heard, the Employees Benefits Trust...
We haven't had to have one. Yeah, we haven't had to have one.
Daniel, could I get you to come up and to the podium, please, sir? State your name and your address and your affiliation with George Morgan &amp; Sneed for us, for the record?
My name is Daniel Hungerford. I'm the Audit Manager with George Morgan &amp; Sneed. The $4,000 would be added to that fee if the city was required to have a single audit. A single audit is only required if the city receives grants in excess of $500,000 federal grants. Since we've been auditor, you haven't had that, but occasionally, TexDOT projects or some other type of projects come along that require us to do additional audit work on compliance for those grants. And in that case, we would add $4,000 to the $36,500 fee.
With that being said, we do have an airport expansion project where we will be receiving some additional funding through TexDOT Aviation. So, it's very possible we might be seeing those during the term of this agreement. My other question would be, this Employees Benefits Trust that we just formed, you heard that we would be utilizing the service of the same CPA firm to conduct an audit on it. Is that over and above what we would currently be doing? Would you consider that as a separate 4,000 single audit as well?
No, sir. I believe that that, you know, right now, we audit the self-funded employee insurance plan, and since you're no longer going to that, you'll be going to a trust. I don't really think it will have any major impact on the amount of audit work that we're required when we do the audit.
Okay. Let's see if anybody from the council has any questions regarding this to you. Anybody on the council have any questions for Daniel?
How long have y'all been with this?
Uh...
From the city?
This was our fifth year.
Fifth year?
Yes, sir.
We're a good customer, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we know we've got these grants coming from the airport. Y'all'd waiver on the first year, wouldn't you, to happen?
Well, my understanding of that contract is that TexDOT is going to be handling...you're going to send them money, so hopefully, we won't have a single audit. But no, sir, if you have a single audit, those take quite a bit of work. So, we'll have to take that 4,000.
And that's currently in the existing contract, if I remember reading it. It was just the standard. It's been in there from the...
Yes, sir. It's standard on any...
I did say it.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Perkel?
I was on the staff when we recommended your firm. I come from here, and I think we corrected, probably had a previous problem with audits. I think they've done a good job of continuing, but they are, in my opinion, one of the best.
Mr. Tyra?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Of course, you guys got to understand that we're here to serve the public, and so, I'm all about going out and getting bids, if in fact, that is something that the council agrees to do. I would like to ask our Chief Financial Officer and our city manager a couple of questions. Tony's just got one unanswered. They've been here for five years, and as the mayor talked about, how it works really well with staff. You know, some people call that too comfortable. I'm not going to say that, but you can see how these things go. My point is, I think that with the increase that we're seeing, and since we just finished our audit, I think we have some time to move out and see if we have the best price. I think we got the best service by all means, and I want to make sure that my colleagues hear that. I'm not questioning the work that these gentlemen in their firm has done for the past five years, but I'm asking us to consider, since we just got finished our audit, we got some time, let's get out there and see if, in fact, anybody can meet the standard that these folks have raised the bar to, and if they can beat the price. We're dealing with taxpayers' money. We haven't done anything in five years, and we're here to jump out for another three years. That's eight years without looking at something else to see if we're in fact in check. I'm just saying, let's make sure that checking balance is in place, and you do that by going out for bids. Thank you.
I will say one thing, that normally CPAs do not bid contracts. They'll do it for a certain amount. And I personally, I...they don't...you just don't go ask them to beat somebody's price. It's not business.
Let me just...
Mr. Allen, get up to that microphone for me, please, sir.
I don't know what y'all charge again with until today, so I just heard the numbers are red.
It's a $36,500 for each year.
Okay, right now. But have y'all went...what was it the last time you bid per year?
From 2008 to 2011, we left it be the same, $35,140.
So, you're going up $1,000 roughly, 4%, huh?
Right, 1300 or 1400.
Yeah. You know, I'll tell you my opinion on it, and I do believe that we should try to save every nickel we can for taxpayers. But we do have a good record with y'all, and y'all got a good one with us. And $1400, $1500, as much money as the city runs, y'all audit and force and stuff, I don't know if I'd gamble on another one to see if it would work or not. That's just my opinion.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys have actually red-flagged a few items, control issues for the city in years past, including during last year's audit, if I remember right. There was a control feature that you guys implemented that was passed on to some of our department heads about procedure. And that's part of what you guys do.
It wasn't any management comments?
I believe it was the year before, but yes, sir. That's something we do each period. We look at your controls, we test those, and if we find a weakness or find something, we definitely are going to report it to you and try and assist the city in tightening up those loose areas that may be concerned.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the extension of the city's contract with George Morgan &amp; Sneed. We have a motion by Mr. Perkel. Need a second, please?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor of approval of a contract extension for an additional three years? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note that we have one nay, and that was Mr. Tyra. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number four. Consider and award a construction contract for the Park Wells Project. To central Texas Water Well for the Park's Well Project, based on their total low bid of $376,010. Alva, can you enlighten us as to what this is about? I understand this is money coming out of a 2012 bond utility fund that was approved by council earlier this year.
Yes, sir.
But this is actually for, if I'm not mistaken, it's for two well sites on our city park property.
Correct. It is. It is. We have actually the two well sites. As far as, this is like roughly about 2,500 foot of water line. Even though the city forces are doing the water line itself, which is saving us for about $40,000 right there itself. The city electric crews are putting in the electric force, so again, another savings, about $20,000. With everything totaled, we had budgeted roughly about $475,000 for these two wells, which came in at $376,000. We only had two bids. The high bid was $543,000, and then this one was $376,000. We had, I believe, seven...five. Five that was picked up. So, it's been kind of strange on the bids, as we've seen lately. We have one, two, three bids where we used to have, you know, sometimes up as many as seven or eight at times. And so, I'm not quite sure what that is. But I know a lot of the well drillers back several years ago went over to the oil companies. Now, what it is now, I have no real idea. We did have one that apologized that he wasn't able to bid. I can't remember what the reasoning was. But so, we would have had three. Also, this is just the tip of the iceberg. By the way, guys, you'll probably be getting tired of hearing about wells before too long. I won't be coming back in the next several months. We'll have more and more coming in. We've got one right now currently that's getting ready to go to the groundwater district for approval. We're working on, I believe, two, our surveillance request, possibly three. Then, we have three located that I'm working with the developer, which we've already agreed upon. It doesn't matter where they go. And then, I have another three with another developer that is still up in the air. So, we're looking good on the wells. Like I said, this will give us approximately an extra about 130,000 gallons per day with these two wells.
Alva, as you know, Dallas is back on the air, and it's not like drilling for oil, is it, to drill for water?
No, sir. No, no.
We're pretty sure we're going to strike water somewhere down there, right?
Yes, sir. Like I say, we've done a lot of research on this area. I've been...I couldn't tell you how many wells I've put in personally, but as far as, we've been checking all the different places, plus we have, you know, a hydrological study, if I can say that right. We've had that, and that's another thing we refer to. We go back and check the different areas, plus, you know, some of it, I'm familiar with where the areas are, the good wells, bad wells, so forth. Sometimes, there are some that you're going to hit pockets where you get into hydrogen sulfide. We've done that before. But now, with the technologies, we can actually take that out of the water. Where before, you could take that out of the water. You got that. It was good for mosquitoes, and that's about it.
All right. Any questions for Alva regarding the well project?
These are...it's up on Crossland, yeah, Crossland. It's in the very back, actually very back of...it's part of the property that Jerry Durant dedicated to us, I believe, the 38 acres that he dedicated to us. And they're actually in the back. Actually, we have a disc golf course right next to both of them, right there. They're off to the side of it.
So, it is by the disc golf course, Jerry?
Yes, sir. One is to the far north corner, and the other one's to the far south corner.
Is it going to displace any of those?
No, sir. No, sir. Will not. They will not. They'll be able to play right on through, unless they have a real bad aim, I guess.
Nice. All right. Thank you, sir.
I got one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hewlett?
What does those bids include? Does that include pumps, piping, so much piping? What's all that include?
Yes, sir. It's the pumps itself. As far as the well pumps itself, it's going into...actually, we have a...well, we don't have the coronators or anything like that. We just have the control panels. We have a building that's set up, fencing, the piping, like I said before, we're doing all the piping. But that's basically what this one includes. Now, eventually, we'll get into where we'll have pump stations and so forth and so forth. But this right here is just the well pumps, the well, the casing pipe itself, the screen. And that's where, you know, we set it up in the screens, you know, different levels where the water comes in. So, that's what all this is.
So, we'll still be out-of-pocket if it's the piping, too, take the word for it, take it back?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we've already paid for that piping. Like I said, roughly, that pipe cost me about $6,000. If we would have bid that out, you're probably looking at about $40,000, roughly $30,000 for the water piping itself.
And Mr. Allen has a question.
Alva, what's the estimated date to start and the date estimated to finish? When I say finish, I'm talking about online, right?
We're getting ready to set up a pre-con, but Ben, would you like to just... uh...
I believe it's what it is.
And it's to be completed tied into our system?
Yes. And, and the good news is, like I said, we'll, we'll have the water line sitting right there waiting on them.
Sure.
And the electric will be sitting right there waiting on them.
Alva, I know you can't tell exactly what the, uh, GPM is going to be. Uh, what do you estimate that we'll get out of these two wells? You know, are they going to be tied together, looped?
They will be tied together, they'll be coming into the same well line, um, roughly, they'll be coming into pump station one, actually the way I've got it set up right now. Um, you're probably looking at, in that area, you're probably looking at about forty-five gallons a minute roughly, maybe give or take.
On each one?
Yes, sir. So it'll be about ninety gallons a minute roughly, so it'll be equate out to about a hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to award a construction contract for three hundred and seventy-six thousand and ten dollars to the Central Texas Water Well.
Don't move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second by Mr. Perkel.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number five. Item number five, considering approve a construction contract with In Situ Form Technologies Incorporated with a not to exceed amount of eighty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the 2012 maintenance rehabilitation by CIPP. Gentlemen, this is a, a rehabilitation of approximately a thousand feet of sewer line along Pearl Street. In, uh, the year two thousand and eleven, five sewer backups were all found to be along Pearl Street through the year of two thousand and eleven. That was the total number of sewer backups in our system. Uh, this company, what they do is they send in, uh, a camera, a video camera, they survey the pipe. Following that, they follow it up with, uh, basically shooting a balloon type substance or some sort of a polyform inside of the piping. It seals the pipe that's there without having to pull new pipe. There is one section of pipe that's going to be upsized as part of this award contract as part of the eighty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. It stretches somewhere, uh, east of the current, uh, I refer to it as the Lodge of Granbury, but, uh, I think you know the property I'm referring to, it's, uh, just by the city beach area. They'll be upsizing the pipe down through there in order to accommodate better flow and that's all done without having to tear up the streets, from what I understand, Alva. How about giving me a little bit more details so we're all informed?
Yes, sir. Uh, basically, the upsizing is, is actually they, they use, the technology that they use is actually like a missile. And currently, we have, uh, what's called six, or we have six inch clay tile line in there right now. Um, we've added the extra rooms at the lodge, there's various things that's happened and then obviously, the, the extra flows coming into that is, is added to all this. So what we're going to do is we take, actually, it's a missile that you actually put into the line and basically, it bursts out the initial six inch line and then it pulls behind an eight inch PVC line. So you actually, it's very non-vasive, there are, every once in a while, you may have to dig up a tap or something like that, but actually, even with that, they can come back in with robotics. Um, and they can actually come back into the pipe and hole saw, actually back into it and tie in this one. And as well as secured in place, uh, as far as just lining the existing lines as well, they can actually come back in and what they do is they run the camera first, they document where all the taps are, where everything is, they measure everything off and then they come back in and like I said, the actual camera will have robotics on it and it has a hole saw, a little four inch hole saw on it and it comes back in and it cuts out the taps inside the pipe. So again, our crew's going to have to tear up the street to get into it. Um, obviously, street costs are expensive and then obviously, it's kind of hard to match it up every time. Um, this is a very good technology, we've been using it for years, uh, as far as on, uh, as far as a lot of the sewer lines, we've lined roughly about fifty thousand feet now. And part of this is actually part of what's called the SSOI or the Sanitary Sewer Overflow Initiative Agreement with the TCQ. And part of that agreement is, is we start knocking out INI or inflow and infiltration issues, um, which obviously, what happens is like in large rains, we get a lot of inflows that come into the manholes and into our sewer system that inundate, uh, all the way from lift stations to the wastewater treatment plants. What this does is cut those flows down and it helps us, so actually saves us money in that way too, where you're not treating rainwater coming out. So it's a, it's a good technology, like I said, we've been doing it, uh, for a long time. This contract is a byboard, a byboard contract, so I was wanting to pass that, make sure everybody knew that too. Uh, we went off the byboard to get this and like I said, in such form, it's been in business for a long time.
Has the city contracted with CIPP prior to this?
Yes, sir. We have, we have. Uh, we, we've done, like I said, we've done a lot of work, actually about fifty thousand feet of it, is what we've done to date, uh, since roughly about two thousand and two. And, uh, we used to have, uh, back in two thousand and two, in two thousand and three, I mean, we were up about forty-five to fifty, uh, backups, which obviously, you have to have emergency crews going out in the middle of the night and everything else for these, it's costly. Um, since we've done that, like you read, we've, we've had about four or five and that's it. Uh, we've decreased it by that much. And again, we've done a sewer study, we have our own camera equipment as well and we do a lot of our, we go in first and start looking. Now, the guys aren't as fond of that camera as I am because basically, for every thirty minutes we run that camera, it keeps them busy for about three weeks, uh, finding holes in the pipe, plus just, you know, roots coming through and everything else, so, and this is part of that, so.
Is, Mayor, did you say it's a thousand feet we're replacing?
It's a thousand feet that's being rehabilitated.
And that's for eighty-three thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
That's eight thousand dollars a foot.
But then you also would need to weigh if you were to tear up the street and go back in and delay traffic and a few other obstacles that would...
Well, they would have to lay traffic if, if they do it anyway, I mean, they're going to...
No, it, it's actually done in the pipe that's currently there.
Yeah, they'll go into an existing manhole, just like, you know, how we run a, a sewer main?
Yeah.
And we pull up with a jet machine and you know, how, on that, granted, you'll have a truck sitting there.
I've done a lot of, this is not insurance, I've done a lot of direct recording, I, I understand that, but, but, but my question is, holy smokes, eight thousand dollars a foot, that just scares me to death. It's a lot of money.
It's eighty dollars.
Is it?
Yeah, eighty dollars, yeah. It is eighty dollars.
Okay, I'll go for that.
Yes, sir.
How did I get eight thousand? Oh, I did it, I'm sorry, I did it with a...
Yeah, I was thinking about that, I was like, well, no, never mind.
Okay, so that's eighty dollars, is it?
Yes.
I had eighty, I had, I'd written down eighty, I apologize to the public, but I did.
Yes, sir, it is eighty.
Oh, man, that's just ridiculous.
It is, you know, you're looking at, when they go in, when they do a segment, it takes them about four hours. Uh, for that same amount of footage for us to open cut it and get into it, you're looking at several weeks.
Now, but we've already, this was approved in two thousand twelve budget operation?
Yes, sir. Yes, it was.
Yeah, so it's nothing new?
No, no, this, this has been in the budget and this is something we do every year as well, so it's, we've been doing this for, like I said, the last ten years.
Eighty bucks, I have no problem.
Have y'all, have y'all done Doyle, wasn't Doyle done that one?
Yes, sir, it sure was.
Yeah, and it, it took less than a day, it seems like.
Yes, sir.
Go in there and see that, run that deal in there and just, poof.
It's, it's, if you haven't seen it, it's kind of neat, it does kind of smell, but, uh, but when you get in there, it, it is kind of neat, if y'all ever get a chance to go down there when they start running it, um, it, it's a really neat system. I mean, basically, it's an epoxy coated system is what it is when it goes in and just make it up to like four hundred degrees and it goes in towards the whole pipe.
I would love it a little bit.
Yeah, and y'all are more than welcome.
Any other questions for Alva regarding this particular item? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve a construction contract with In Situ Form Technologies Incorporated, not to exceed the amount of eighty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the 2012 maintenance rehabilitation by CIPP.
Don't move.
A motion by Mr. Tyra, a second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us down to item number six. Consider an approve and engineering services agreement with In Protect Hibbs and Todd Incorporated for the design of a new reverse osmosis water treatment plant for the city of Granbury at a not to exceed amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. You'll remember, folks, uh, in two thousand and two, the city selected EHT for a plant engineer, uh, firm and in two thousand and seven, uh, EHT began designing for a two-point zero million gallon plant. However, in two thousand and ten, the council sort of changed the scope of the plant and it grew to a two-point-five million gallon plant. And what we have before us now is an amended engineering services agreement that's brought to us by EHT for 2012. It's a two-part payment arrangement, part one is for the design service of a two-point-five million gallon reverse osmosis water treatment plant, along with implement, implementation of a pilot plant to be used for preliminary studies that are required by TCEQ. That's at a one point one eight, uh, K, I believe. Uh, with the remainder of, of the dollars would be spent on part two, which would take us into the construction and startup phase for the new facility.
Correct.
But for the total overall price, we are talking one million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Elaborate on what I've said and try to see if I've spun it wrong here for me, Alva.
No, that's, that's, that's pretty correct. The way it's, uh, the way we have it set up again, is we have some of the, the inspection process is not in the, the first phase, kind of the mayor pointed out, and that's going to be into the second phase. So when the construction kicks in, obviously, when they come in and start doing inspections as far as on the construction itself, um, that cost is the difference between the one point one and where it goes up to the one point three total cost. Um, the only thing that we did have in there is, um, as far as, we're not exactly sure when the construction will begin, we're assuming three to five years maybe, depending on growth and everybody knows that's going to make a big difference. Uh, when that does take place, we're, we're trying to also get into any kind of inflationary costs as far as on the engineering side of parts and inspection costs. Um, they did have a little clause in there on, only section C on that part right there, which was three percent after the three years. Um, so they did have that, um, because we were looking at some different, a little bit, you know, they, they were trying to estimate what it would be if they started five years from now and we were having a hard time trying to estimate those costs. So that's, that was the only thing that we had in there, but the total cost was one point three. Again, that, that's the preliminary, uh, design phase, that's the final design phase, uh, bidding and negotiating phase and some of this goes into the post-construction phase as well. Um, so that's what it is. So hopefully, I think what the mayor was saying is, is we hit on this. Now, again, like I said, we've been working on this. One thing that I did want to point out again, is once we do this, pilot study's going to take roughly, you can, uh, kick in here in a minute, but, uh, it's going to be roughly about a year that we're going to be going through the pilot study. Um, once we do this and we do our permitting and everything else, depending on the, the segment of the, the lake river, whatever you want to call it, uh, is when our permits are going to come up, okay? However, once we do this, we still can renew our permits, so whenever the time comes, we can renew. Um, so that should cover us on that. Unless the only thing that would change, for example, is if EPA or TCQ comes up with some kind of rule change, say five years from now, we just have to bend, you know, whatever studies we did and kind of make it work there, that would be the only thing that we would have, uh, the negatives on, on part of this. But it doesn't mean we have to start construction, you know, within a year or anything like that, we're still, we can renew the permits, but I think what we've seen last year, as far as with the, you know, with the drought conditions and so far, knock on wood, we have it this year, but if we do, I think this is, you know, we definitely need to be ready to go, just in case. Or if we do get some growth coming in, this will be something we'll be ready for. So once all the engineering is done, permitting is done, then we can, we can set it into motion from there.
Let me, let me ask you a question, because in our 2012 utility bond?
Yes.
We covered this one point three, is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct, we did.
Because, because we talked about some twelve million for the, uh, wells, if I remember right, or something of that nature?
Believe it.
Can you refresh my memory what, what, what we had talked?
I believe it's three point five for the, for the wells, I believe is what it was.
And, and, but we did...
We're only going to pay for the, for the, for the design.
And not the inspections for the final.
Separate thing for that?
Yes, that's how that was said.
All right. And, and I'm seeing in here, I'm seeing under exhibit A, the scope of project, the preliminary design phase of it, I mean, we're, we're talking about them preparing the design documents, providing the necessary field surveys, advising us for any additional reports. Is that also going to be them helping us through the TCQ filing for the pilot study as well?
Yes, sir.
So it, it puts a bunch onto their plate for them to do in preparation of the pilot study and, and through that entire process as well, is that correct?
It, it does. And, and like I said, they'll also be doing the discharge permitting at that time and they'll also be doing, uh, as far as the raw water intake and things like that as well. So, yeah, they're going to be, they're going to be doing quite a bit of that.
All right. Council members, uh, I notice you ready to talk on this, Mitch?
Yes, and Mayor, because of this coming forward, I was still under the impression it would be sometime before this came before us because of what we did in two thousand and ten and because we took the measures to go and approve the three point five instead of going out with sixteen million and trying to do all this on the fast track. And I do have some questions for you, Alva, and for our finance and city manager as well. The first question is to our city manager, am I under the understanding through our prior conversations in two thousand and ten, that the SWATs payment that we are obligated to, part of it will end in two thousand and fourteen and then all of it will end in two thousand and seventeen?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And so we understood that back in two thousand and ten and there are some on this council that want to continue with this surface water project a year ago. And it came to a stop because we felt by the vote of the council, it necessary to see that the wells get dug, that we take that two dollar per thousand water versus that eight dollars per thousand water. I'm all for going forward with the surface water plant according to the financial reasonableness as we go off the SWAT water. And so I'm really concerned, Alva, when I hear you say things like, well, right now, alls we're doing is this preliminary design, we're going to go after the permits and, you know, we can get those renewed because it's been very clear through our big, huge liberation in two thousand and ten, that, that there's a timeline set on this. And you said something that's very important, once you do this, the clock starts ticking. And, and I'm not willing tonight to hinge all this on what may happen or may not, we need to know exactly what's going to happen because I'm real concerned about us moving forward. And then you said something about, well, the TCQ could change or that, and then somebody comes back to us next year and says, we got to build a plant, we got to let those twelve million, thirteen, whatever it comes out to be at that point in time, because I'm not ready. The indebtedness here is way too much, we've talked about the SWAT plant, so we've got a lot of components here. So what I'm trying to get to the bottom of is, I remember the one point two, we talked about the pilot program, they're going to build a small miniature plant.
Yes, sir.
It's going to operate and that helps us build the big plant.
Correct.
If we're not going to be able to fund this in full until two thousand and seventeen, why are we doing this now when in fact, we're drilling wells, we approved two tonight and we have on the works to do eight or nine more? It's going to bring our consumption and our level up to the need we, we need, okay? Because we still have SWATs, we still have that reserve out there as well. So I'm a little concerned why this went so quickly when in fact, we said, no, let's So I'm a little concerned why this went so quickly when in fact we said, "No, let's hold off." And now it's back before. And I know one of my colleagues sitting to my left, Mr. Perkel, has been pushing this and I appreciate that. He has a right to do that. But why are we here? Why can't we wait another year?
Well, what we can do as far as, once we, I guess one benefit would be, Councilman Tyra, would be if we do get the, if we get all this done, we get the pilot study, we get all the information together where we can get all the preliminary designs, get all the design done. I mean, if we ever had to move forward, you know, quicker, we could. But even if we don't, so when the time comes in 2017 or 18, and I'm hoping, I'm with you, I'm hoping with these wells, obviously, it will push this back a little bit where the need's not going to be there. But if we had to move at any given time, at least once we have the engineering done, this would definitely help us and we would be ready quicker if we had to. Hopefully, we're not in that situation.
Well, see, but again, you're throwing that doubt out there and that doubt actually could be 12 to 15 to 16 million dollar indebtedness. I want to say something to you in respect to that need. As we approved $3.5 million to get started on those wells, because that's going to fill in that gap. We all know, you know, there's been this talked up over. If we need additional water right now, we can go to the SWATs plant. We still have rights to that water very clearly. It's not all gone and that's why we're paying that debt.
Yes, sir. Technically, what we have now is we have a million gallons that we can go through them. However, we did lose 500,000 gallons-
Of course.
...back in 2009, which that hurt us as far as that goes. But like you said and then as you pointed out, the wells are going to start taking up for that. So hopefully, like I said, you know, once we get these wells coming online, it's definitely going to help. It's not going to hurt us and you're right. And then the more we get, the more production we get, it's going to be, it's going to be very beneficial to us in the future.
What's the downside? The money sitting there drawing interest? What's the downside to wait a year from today to do this?
The downside would be if we did have to move faster. And again, I'm not saying-
If we have to move faster, I appreciate you saying that because that's, but that's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned we're setting up a situation here like it's been done at this city too many times in the past where we're told, "You got to do this. You got to move fast." And what we wind up doing is going in debt and that's why we had the highest indebtedness of a lot of small cities period. I think we were the highest at one time.
Yeah, which we don't want to do that and we don't want to, you know, we just don't want to jump at the first sign. And I agree with you. I mean, obviously, that's a chunk of change and I think all of us discussed that. I mean, that's going to be expensive. And again, like you pointed out, that 3.5 is go to the wells, which is going to supplement what we have and it is going to. And I think that was a wise move for all of y'all that y'all did that, very wise move. But I do believe on top of it though, I think that the, you know, with the surface water treatment plant, you know, again, I don't think it's going to be, it should be three to four years down the line and maybe longer than that. And again, all that's going to hinge, like I said, you know, and again, we can speculate as far as that goes or I can. But the bottom line is, is number one, we got the wells coming in. You're absolutely correct and that's going to help us out tremendously. We're going to have the flows coming in. But with this study here, it's obviously, we're not going to get anything out of it right now. And yes, this is a lot of money too. You know, the 1.3 total for the whole-
How long can this study sit on the table without having to be re-approved or renewed?
Indefinitely.
So when you talk about permits, what were you talking about getting renewed or getting-
The permits you have to, your discharge permits you have to. That's minimal. Basically, I do that now with the wastewater treatment plant. Normally, it's every five years, but again, it depends on when you get into the segment. It's kind of strange because like a lot of permits you get into, if you start today, you know, then five years from now, you get to renew your permits. This is whatever segment you're on. So say if everybody renews next year, then you'd have to renew next year. And then, but it's good for the next five years after that or three years depending on what the-
Are those out there right now already sitting for us, those permits?
We don't have the permits currently in hand, no, sir, on that. Now, we've got the wastewater treatment plant permits. I've got all those, but not on the water treatment plant.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but did you just say that the permit's good for five years?
Until you have to renew, yes.
Okay. This is 2012, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so 2017, we're out of the SWATs plant completely, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We are solely dependent upon groundwater at that point plus whatever 100,000 gallons we can get out of surface water, out of our existing plant.
Yes, sir.
So with that consideration in mind, you've got to draw a line here in the sand and say at some point, you need to get the preliminary work done so that you can pull that trigger when that trigger needs to be pulled. I understand we need to build up our coffers to help defray the cost and expense of a surface water treatment plant, but at some point, if you procrastinate too long, you haven't helped yourself out any because you've stalled the process. Minimum is one year that the study has to run for the pilot plant.
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, you've got all the drawing phase. Can I ask Keith Kendall with EHT to address the timeframe we're talking about getting through the drawing phase? What all are we talking about timeframe-wise in preparation of this? Not just the pilot plan. We know that's one year. What else additional?
It's going to be a 15, 18 month process because we talked about one year for the pilot study. That's just getting approved and a pilot study done. You still have the review by TCEQ. You also have the final design day done and the review by that by TCEQ and the city as well. There's time, you know, allowed for that. The permits, with the discharge permit for the brand that we're going to have in the RO back into the lake as well as the intake permit, you don't have those yet. So I can, the timeline allows us on how long that's going to take to go through the core of engineers, TCEQ and ERA. And I thought that was part of what we wanted to do is really put another bullet in the city's gun is let's go ahead and get the design done, get the permitting done. And then that clock doesn't start ticking on five years until you're actually granted the permit. So if you got the permit in 2013, 2014, you don't leave there until 2019. And so the other thing is that I know that Wayne and Alba wanted to do is you'll notice they not to exceed 1,363. What that does for the city is contract price that we gave you back in February 2011, 16 months ago, I am guaranteeing for another three years. That includes everything, design, construction phase, service, post-construction and closeout of the project so that you don't have to worry about, okay, two years, three years from now, I've got to start construction. And that's one important point to make. You talked about 2017, SWAT goes off and we're just back on our surface water. Well, you don't start building a plant in 2017 and also have it there. The construction time for this plant is about 15 months if you don't have any rain delays, if you don't have any other weather events. So you've got to start backing up.
I got you. And me and you've talked before, in fact, we've talked many times about this since 2010 because of the surface water versus the groundwater. So I'm very much in support of this and I agree that we talked about a 15th month construction phase, 15 months before whatever date we go off in 2017. What would be nice is to see firm wording from you all, I've been talking about myself, I can't speak to the whole council, to see that timeline where you see, okay, pilot program, permit, time, and then construction. Because what I'm excited about is seeing that construction closer to 2017. So when we do go off SWATs and we open that plant, we're, you know, we're paying for that but we're getting a great return. We don't have the other indebtedness out there. So I'm asking for some kind of calendar on this is basically what I'm thinking.
And the calendar could be what you want it to be on when the construction starts because that's probably the most important point. What this allows you to do is the total contract with services, but you're guiding it. In other words, once the final design is done, once all the permitting is done, put it on the shelf. You've got your permit, the bullet is back in your gun.
Okay.
Then when you're ready to proceed with construction, whatever changing condition, wells all of a sudden go bad or you're not getting as much as you had hoped to get or something else happens or you just want to accelerate the process to the demand, you're ready to pull the trigger and go. The pilot studies are approved, the permits are approved.
And I got you and we're all on board on that. So tell me today, if this is approved, what would be the point when you'd have it all nice packaging, set it on the-
About 15 months from-
From here?
Yes, sir.
So we're talking, we'll be in the 2013, middle 2013, the latter part of 2013 and we're still got 14, 15, 16, four more years until we, you know, so that's my concern that somebody will come in here and say, "We're ready." Boom, they indebtedness, the folks, you know, the taxpayers again, and we haven't got rid of the debt. That's all I'm concerned about.
The second, the construction phase of the project is for a future council. It's not for us right now.
Listen, I know that. I'm just trying to-
So I understand where you-
We don't have an argument here.
All right.
We don't have an argument.
Councilman Allen?
I've got one question, one of you Keith, but first to Wayne. What did we pass the, this money for the wells? Wasn't this included, what we're talking about tonight? Was it included in that?
It's already in the bond. We already have the money in the bank.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we're on the same page here. Okay. Keith, on page, I'm very sorry, my little deal went down here, but 6.05? Which page?
It's, uh, page four of 10.
Okay.
It's 6.05B termination.
Yes, sir.
Explain to us what that means.
What that provides is if either the owner or the engineer wants to terminate the contract, then it pieces of provisions and the conditions that you do it under. For example, if it's for cause and either party can give a 30-day written notice in event a substantial failure, notify that party for the engineer for seven days notice as you go forward and not withstand it for going. It's also terminate on the paragraph 601D1 if the party receiving such notice again does not correct a substantial failure. So while that, it's a general contract condition that's in every contract that's, you know, okay, if I'm not satisfied or EHT is doing a poor job, how do I terminate then? Well, under the contract, this is how you notify them, this is how you terminate them.
I love our part of it, but I don't like y'all's part. But, you know, and a lot of that would be determined on how's the pay on this thing set up, this 1.3 million. I didn't see that in there.
Schedule and payment.
Well, as far as the schedule of payments within it is, you know, if we go through and invoice, I can pay for providing that, but what you've got in this scope of services with the amounts for each. So as we went through and finished the preliminary design phase, which has a amount allocated to it, we would bill 100% of that once you reviewed and approved it. The final design phase, the same way, as you go through and we finish all the design, you've reviewed it, it's approved, we would invoice 100% of that too as you go forward.
My biggest concern in this is really Wayne's department, but as a city councilman, I get a lot of calls on, "Pat, we got sticking out of the water that we paid probably three times more than it's worth." They've already got their money and the job's not done. And this is just saying, Keith, I know you and I know y'all's company are great people, great company, but my concern for taxpayers is I don't want to see us go out and pay a bunch of money here and then all of a sudden, the work's not done, we get crossways or whatever happens. And the taxpayers out here like we are on this other project trying to figure out how we're going to get out of this mess. I know y'all are a reputable company. I don't mean that to be ugly to you or anything like that, but I think our scale of pay should be in the best interest of the city of Granbury.
You were asking about a compensation and there is actually an exhibit C in this agreement that talks about compensation, Councilman Allen.
Normally, Councilman Allen, too, what they do is like, for example, while they're working on the preliminary design-
All right. I've been told it's page 80 on your iPad.
So when I get that invoice and Keith gets out of this, when I get that invoice, I go through and I'm making sure, okay, did he do this? This is what they're saying, the same with the towers of, you know, GPS whatsoever they did. I go through that review that and once I say, okay, you know, yes, they did this, this and this, I sign off, send it up to finance and make them check for 2,000, 500, 100,000 to do. So basically, whatever work they do, we pay for that. So if for a case scenario, they get halfway through 2013, 2017, well, obviously, they're only wanting to pay for the work they did, that's all they do. And obviously, we get a lot of accounts and we don't have to know, but that's how much-
I guess the other item I would note is payments are also addressed in section four of page 110 to how those done. And answer to if we didn't substantially complete or we failed to live up to it. Hey, you know, we've been in business for 30 years. The plant that y'all went and saw in Missouri City was just announced as the winner of the Texas Public Works Association Outstanding Project, a $25,000, $50,000 project within the resigning group that I flew my family up here from San Antonio and just made a substantial investment in purchasing survey services in Granbury.
I know, Keith, and I appreciate that, but I just want to make sure that we don't get another situation.
We're not going anywhere.
And I like you and I like your company, but on page eight of 10, you said, Mayor, it didn't give prices there right then. It just says, I guess, where the draws are coming.
Page 80.
Are you looking at the exhibit C, page 80 of your-
Oh, I'm very sorry, no, I'm not.
While he's finding that, Mayor, I want to make clear to the engineer that I'm all for the program and the project, but because of the delay that we actually instituted to go with the ground wells to make up the difference, I'm real concerned now that because of what I'm hearing tonight, it's not about your firm. I think you all will complete the job and everything will be great because you've done a great job in the past. It's not about that. It's about somebody presenting some fear tactics 15 months from now and say, "We got it done. We got everything done. The permits are here. We got to go." And then boom, here we go. And we got that plant operational before 2017 and we're paying both of those payments. So that's my only concern. It's not about your company or anything like that. I appreciate you.
Keith, in other words, you're saying primary design phase?
Preliminary.
Okay. It, uh, 168,000?
Yes, it's broke down as to each section.
In other words, what you're saying, the way I understand you, Mayor, and Keith, the city don't write you a check if you've completely done with that.
No, sir. You will pay us each month as we work towards that, with the 168,000. But what I'm saying is you don't start paying us for final design until we're through with all the preliminary design phase. I wish I could tell you, I'm taking up the carry $168,000 of work effort, but I'm not. I need to get paid each month of the work.
Okay. What's the difference in design phase and final design phase?
That's outlined in a scope of work under exhibit A, preliminary design phase. You'll see an entire bucket list of items that, one through seven, and under that, you'll find a bucket list for the final design phase.
And to answer your question, the difference between preliminary and final is preliminary, we are setting up all what we're trying to design, the standards of it and doing a preliminary analysis of it, getting to the city, okay, here's what we're going to do on the final design. Here's the results of the pilot study as we go forward. Here's how we're planning to do the final design and do the drawings. What that allows you to do is control, well, Alba can control, okay, better just taking off and go to final design and going, this isn't really what I wanted. We've set up all the design concepts in the preliminary design phase. The city reviews it, Alba says, "Yes, I'm good with all of that" or tweak this, "I want this and this and this." We make those changes and incorporate that and go forward with the final design, which is the full drawings, specifications, contract documents and everything. When I say contract documents, I'm talking about the construction contract documents if you want to understand.
What's the environmental review?
Permit review?
No.
Environmental?
Environmental review, we don't have that within that up there. The environmental review that we, that you've got in there is oriented to the permit and that we've got to do for the intake and the studies and that.
Discharge, yes, sir.
Because one of the studies that was done in the past was the Alan Farmer study on discharging into the lake, whether would impact the lake's liniity levels or not, the PDS and fluoride. Then we're going to need to update some of that work.
What kind of money we left in the land? Just roughly, what are we talking about money-wise?
With environmental?
Yeah.
50,000.
50,000, yeah. And about the same cost for the, there was another one down there too, application for funding after the Ford, A2102, A12.
Right. Let me give you one.
Keith, let me ask you this, Keith.
Yes, sir.
Better question. There is things that you're not going to have in your contract that are going to pop up or like this here?
No. What you see here, when it says not included within it, in other words, that's not going to be included later.
Okay. How many of those items that we got, the city had to pay for?
Okay. What the city ought to going to pay for is the preliminary design phase, the final design phase, the bidding negotiation phase, the construction phase and the post-construction phase. That's all under the basic engineering services. Then you have what you call additional engineering services. Those are the ones we do, time and material, like the inspection services, that's one the city will be paying for. Design survey services should be paying under this contract. Water treatment plant discharge permitting should be paying under this contract. Raw water intake permit should be paying under this contract. The procurement of the MF, the micro membrane filtration and the ultra filtration, RO equipment ultra filtration, RO equipment, you'll be paying for under this contract, the pilot testing and support services you'll be paying under this one, that's included all in the one three six thirty, and the preparation of the O and M manual, this is what it is. Well, the only thing that is not included in this contract within, uh, that environmental review and the funding application support, we don't have anything allocated for, is that. That's all under the permit.
I'm far off it, I really am, because I think we need to get it going, but I just trying to get a, kind of like I was asking you earlier, best of the well, you know, how much force is going to be and all this stuff, what, what would, what would you think our final cost would be to get this done, with the things that you just mentioned that we got to do on our own?
What, any? Oh, no, no, what you got to do on this, everything that I just mentioned is in this one million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar contract.
The only thing we got the environmental studying to?
The only thing that, no, the only thing that the city has to pay for, we've, we've got the environmental study under the permit, we've got that taken care of, the only thing that the city has to pay for is the geotechnical and material testing, that was estimated at seventy-six thousand, and then the rental of the pilot equipment, the associated chemicals and everything, that's estimated at a hundred and thirty thousand. And the way that that works is they send you a PO, you know, that you're renting their equipment for the pilot study, when you go forward and procure them, that hundred and thirty thousand, or whatever, it's an estimate, in other words, you know, it may be a hundred thousand, maybe ninety thousand, so that, that is credited towards your purchase price of the equipment, in other words, you get that back when you, you know, you're going to see a line item in the construction business that's credit for pilot testing equipment rental, a hundred and thirty.
If we spend two hundred thousand, we're going to get the two hundred back on.
When you purchase, the final construction.
Right, yeah, okay, yes, fair, okay, thank you, sir.
And then the reason we did that, Mr. Allen, was, uh, for one, instead of going through them, to have them to get those, you know, pilot testing equipment, and, you know, had to go through this way, you know, you decided to be cheaper and support your construction as they issued the G O N S, that's very, twice like there's no benefit, it's very high.
So, the roughly we're talking, have a neighborhood of one point five, well, actually, right close to one point six here, to the one point three.
The whole possible.
Yep.
There.
Yeah, including all the construction site, so.
Go ahead.
Everything there.
Any other questions for, uh, the two people at the podium, any, anybody, this? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Entertain a motion to approve an engineering services agreement with E H T for an amount not to exceed one point three six three million dollars. So move?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, we have a second by Mr. Perkel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. I'd like to, uh, take a short little recess, we'll be back in ten minutes. This time we'll reconvene back into open session, we'll pick up where we left off at item number seven of our deliberation agenda, considering and approve the rescission of the First Amendment to the hotel site lease for the Hilton Garden Inn, returning the parties to their original ownership positions with respect to the ownership of the personality in the hotel. Council members, I'd like to, uh, point out that in the First Amendment to the hotel site lease, that it actually had two parts to it, Section Two was, uh, the section that had to deal with ownership of personality, Section One actually had to do with, uh, ownership of the property of the hotel site, and as such, uh, I would recommend that we, uh, I spoke with the city attorney about this, about rescinding only Section Two of the First Amendment, the ownership of personality, to clarify that, and the reason why this is brought back before us, you'll remember in January of two thousand twelve, Mr. Kirkland approached the city requesting an amendment to the hotel site lease, clarifying that the city would be the owner of the personality, however, he has since been made aware of the fact that he needed permission of his bank, which had placed a lien on the personality items as collateral for the loan to build the hotel, and by transferring those items to the city, that his lien is now in jeopardy. Now, if you'll remember back to January, there was little discussion about who actually the property itself belongs to, which was the city of Granbury, and that item was fairly quick in resolving in the First Amendment to clarify that, however, Section Two, there was much discussion about what was ownership of personality, it's recommended by our counselor and, uh, the city manager, who sat down with Mr. Kirkland, that, uh, the city really has no interest in having the personality items, so, uh, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to rescind Section Two, ownership of personality of the First Amendment to the hotel site lease for the Hilton Garden Inn.
Mayor, if I may?
All right.
I've spoken to Mr. Kirkland, I, I anticipated that, before I put the item on the agenda, that you would say that, and I spoke to him at one point, and he reminded me that his bank note requires the bank's permission before he's allowed to amend his lease at all, and the bank did not give approval for any amendments to the lease, I spoke with him again today, after staff meeting yesterday, and you insisting on this, um, Section Two rescission, and he again spoke with his bank, and again, his bank said today they were not interested in amending his lease, in fact, I have an email from him that says, we can shore up the ownership language in a future amendment, but right now, my bank will not consent to that, I'm trying to refinance my loan, I'm closing this week, and it is crucial I get this rescission so that my bank does not foreclose, so, I think that we can accomplish what you're, what you're trying to accomplish in your proposed motion in the future date, but right now, this was an item that came forward in January because we were trying to help out Mr. Kirkland, he didn't read his bank notes, his bank paperwork, now we're in a position where he's trying to refinance his note and he can't do it because of this amendment, he asked us to rescind it, and so that's what I put this on the agenda for.
But Stuart, it, it, and, and what he's asking for is the, uh, where he gave us the furniture and stuff, where he didn't want to pay, uh, tax on it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, now he's saying he'll take it back.
Is this all he's asking for?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, I do mean to interrupt you, I apologize, but, w- go back and say what you said, because I, I didn't catch your part.
Well, apparently, according to Mr. Kirkland, he's stating that any change in his hotel site lease would be in violation of what his agreement with the bank is, according to what our city attorney just stated.
Yeah.
But what I was trying to point out is there were two sections, there was a Section One and a Section Two in the First Amendment of the hotel site lease.
There you go, okay.
And that's why I was saying that the only thing, according to what I read in our packet, was he was concerned about the personality of the hotel, but now we're being informed that the bank is saying, don't make any changes to your site lease, because that's what we're, your lien is attached to.
He's talking about not make them right now, or we going, or he wants us redo what we did before?
He needs to get permission from the bank before.
He wants to return to the position he was at in January before he came forward.
Okay, other than the tax benefit, what else did we do for him then?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
We just clarified some language as to?
How simple can this motion be?
Uh, it can be as simple as just approval of the rescission of the First Amendment.
And, and is the city attorney okay with that, because he's the one that's been talking about hoteler?
He made it, he presented this to us.
This is my item, um, we, we only agreed to amend it the first time because Mr. Kirkland asked us to, we're trying to help him out, I spoke to the city manager about the rescission, and we both agreed that, uh, the city doesn't really have any interest in owning beds and furnitures and mattresses at this point in time, so, it helps him out to go back, we're okay with that.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we approve the rescission of the First Amendment to the hotel site lease for the Hilton Garden Inn, returning the parties to their original ownership portions with respect to the ownership of the personality in the hotel.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra, need a second, please. Second by Mr. Hewlett, any further discussion regarding the rescission? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us to item number eight. Item number eight is in two parts, and as such, there'll be two separate, uh, votes on this, please. Item number eight, Part A, consider and approve a lease agreement with the Small Business Development Center, which is a division of Tarleton State University, to allow them to continue operations on a portion of the Langdon Center property. Part B, consider and approve an affiliation agreement with Tarleton State University, setting out various responsibilities between the parties with respect to the operation of the Langdon Center. The reason why this item contains two separate parts for us to consider and vote on is that there is a Small Business Development, uh, Center that's on the property right now, and we would be, uh, extending for a one-year lease agreement in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars per month being paid by them, which includes the utilities, and it would term out in August of two thousand thirteen, it's a one-year lease agreement, however, it does have an option to renew under those same terms, fifteen hundred dollars per month for the next four years. The second part of this has to do with an affiliation agreement with Tarleton State University with regards to Joel Back, their current person, employee that oversees, uh, certain items that take place, events that take place, and, uh, coordinating for the, uh, city, I mean, sorry, for the Tarleton State University, those kind of items. So, uh, as such, our first item that I'd entertain a motion to approve, the SBDC.
Mayor, before we start on that, I had a question before we go into that motion, please. The, the, what I had, the question I had before somebody makes a motion is, am I correct, B is more of approving the affiliation agreement, more like where they negotiated, the city attorney and the city, uh, manager, they worked on this, because y'all approved this, you know, to go forward?
Well.
So why would we approve the lease?
When you say y'all, the council?
I mean, I voted against it, I guess my point, it passed by the council, so I, I'm concerned why, if in fact, we hadn't approved the affiliation agreement, why we would approve the, the rental, it, does it belong to us, now, we don't close till August the first, so.
This, this is one of the last two items of clarity that Tarleton State University and the Texas A and M system have requested to clear up, because these are two items that are contingent on their plate right now, they've got this SBDC operating and functioning on the property, and their hope is that the city will extend the courtesy of allowing them to continue their lease agreement of that property for the next year, with the option to renew for the next four years, and that in consideration of that, we, the city would receive fifteen hundred dollars, and we would be providing electricity, sewer, water, and trash garbage service, as well as janitorial service to all of the facilities, so the city is taking on the responsibility of janitorial service for that facility.
Well, that, that's, that's the only question I had, because when I read it, it talked about a fifteen hundred dollar lease, but that included all the utilities, janitorial, and that sort of thing, so I just wanted to ask, through the, especially through the summer months, what that electric runs for that building?
Yes, well, the, on the average, it's, it's less than a thousand dollars, so there is a, an amount left for rental, but in summer months, it does get up there close to that.
So, yeah, with water and utilities and electric and the janitorial, it's, you think it's a push, a break even?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Councilman, I would say that in our negotiations with both Tarleton and, um, Texas A and M, it was made pretty clear to us that they had fifteen hundred dollars a month, and they have no more, that's all they have.
How much more is the city got?
That's what they were paying to Tarleton for their?
Again, I respect what you said, I appreciate your, but again, I think everybody knows how I feel about this, we're taking on these expenses again, so I, I'm not going to support it, not because I don't appreciate what was done.
We're, we're not at the voting point yet, but.
But, I, I understand, let me understand, just make sure that, uh, I didn't vote for it the first time, I sure can't vote for it the second time around, so, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and a- as I said, I want to, uh, tackle this in two separate pieces, so, uh, we can clear the table of one and move on to the next, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the, uh, Small Business Development Center one-year lease agreement in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars per month, terming out in August two thousand thirteen, with a four-year option to renew at the same terms. We have a motion by Mr. Perkel, needs a second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Hewlett, any further discussion regarding the SB, SBDC lease agreement?
Uh, I would, I was, city manager, you said a thousand dollars for just this little old bitty office that they're in?
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not five hundred square feet.
No installation.
Well, no, it's, it's the whole apartment complex.
The whole apartment complex, they rent the whole apartment complex?
The whole building.
Well, here, here's my concern on it, Mayor, and I, uh.
Let me just make sure Mr. Parsons is through with all of his questions, is that, is that it, sir? All right, Mr. Allen, go ahead.
I did vote for it at the final, I didn't the first time, but my concern on it is, and I don't know how big a building it is, if it's five hundred feet or five thousand feet that y'all are talking about here.
It's got, it's got two offices upstairs, and, uh, two offices downstairs.
And, and I really thought this was put to bed back about three months ago or four, because my understanding was we was going to close it in May and then June and so on and so forth, but here's my concern with this, Mayor and the council, that we're giving them a fifteen hundred dollar a month rent for really five years, and if you try to rent property, it's one year with a four-year option, right?
It's one year with an option to renew, under the same terms, for four, four additional years. It's a mutual thing. It's one year, though, these are four additional one-year terms.
We voted, okay, it didn't say the four years on here, that's, you, you're the one that said that.
I'm, I'm clarifying it, if you read through your, if you read through that packet, it...
Well, we're giving them the option, we are giving them an option for four years, it's their option to do it. We do.
If it doesn't work out, we can end it.
But, but here, here's my concern. I love downtown, I love this deal, I think it's going to be a great deal for the city, but we've got to have income off of something down there for the taxpayers, and if we're sitting here talking about spending, breaking even, who's going to pay maintenance on the building?
Well, there's other facilities, you understand that, on, on.
Come on, this building right here, we're, we're talking about, this one we're get, this one we're going to, and maybe I'm wrong, but it's the electrical and water, a thousand dollars a month for just this, just this building? Okay, so what I'm saying is, I mean, I could see twenty-five hundred a month, no problem, but our taxpayers are paying this money, and if we sit here, what, what happens if it needs painting within the time he leases it out, or needs repair work, who does that?
It's our building, the city would wind up having to pay for that.
You know?
Well, we talked about that underneath the, uh, there's some two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if you'll remember, that we talked about, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rehabilitate some of those buildings, and this is one of those buildings that needed some work.
I don't have a problem with anything, but I'm just saying that, I think if we're going to rent out a building and we're only going to make five hundred, maybe, a month, there ain't no other building in downtown Granbury, that's the area we could risk, anybody would rent that kind of money.
Well, and on the other hand, I don't think the city of Granbury should be making a lot of money off of, uh, certain businesses that are beneficial to the community, and I, I really and truly think that's the intent of the Small Business Development Center.
And Mayor, let, let me ask you, because there were some things that, that Tony said and that the attorney brought out, that, and, and the attorney made it very clear, and if he needs to, to say it again, I, I think he'll be glad to, but in no uncertain terms, basically saying, they said fifteen hundred or nothing, so, Mr. Allen is correct, it's, there's not any mutual situation here, it's a five-year lease for fifteen hundred, because y'all made it clear, you're not going to go up and they're not going to pay any more, currently as we sit here, so it's a five-year lease, and all I'm saying is, you made it clear, and you're the finance guy and the manager, sitting next to me on my left, our electric bills are hurting our business people over and over, and we're taking on this cost for this entity, I mean, I want to look at the impact that these entities have on bringing people to Granbury, I appreciate very much, uh, this Small Business Development Center, but we have to ask ourselves as elected officials, is it worth that in the big picture, when we got taxpayers and we're not willing to pay their tax, their, their electric bill, I, well, listen, we're not making any money on this lease, okay, and I know the mayor just said we're not trying to, and I think that last time it was set up here, y'all were trying to look at it like a park or something, I appreciate that, but we need to finish the opera house and, and get these things done that brings people to Granbury, and I'm not so sure that, that that fifteen hundred lease is, is a good thing for the taxpayers, especially when we're paying the electric.
Well, I, I can appreciate you talking about just the Small Business Development Center and i- its impact on the city, but you've got to bear in mind what all we, the city of Granbury received as a part of the Langdon Center property as a whole, it wasn't just this one building, we gained the Rock House, we gained the Dorally Langdon, or, I'm sorry, the Old Langdon House, uh, correct me? Thank you, the Gordon House, and, and we received, in addition, we received that church, the chapel, which, by the way, I've been told people are already frothing at the bit to have their weddings there, so we've got some rental property that should turn some monies, if that's what we're talking about, and would help to float the SBDC aspect of this, you've got to look at the entire properties as a whole, I think, as opposed to one little, uh, aspect of it, because I want to remind you that these are the last two contingent items to close the deal.
Mayor?
January two thousand twelve, I want to remind you, January two thousand twelve, council approved the real estate agreement for transfer, February two thousand twelve, Texas A and M Board of Regents approved the agreement that we gave them, in June two thousand twelve, in order to clear the table of a current onsite, onsite lease agreement with that tenant, along with a Tarleton coordinator, is what we have on our table, closing date for this whole, whole thing, the title transfer is August one, two thousand twelve, we don't have a lot of time to discuss and negotiate with them any further, so.
We hit it, same conversation back in October.
That's correct.
And, and Mayor.
It took several months to even get it there.
Believe me, I still think it's a good deal, I still don't like the twenty-five years and come back and it's water under the bridge, my concern is, what happens next month, they going to come back and say, well, give me something else, and give us another building, or do this, or?
No.
Keep this, are they still going to keep the lady on the payroll for a year?
What lady?
Or the guy, who it was?
Yes, they're, that's, that's the next part of this.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what the next portion of this is about, but right now, I just want to clarify that this SBDC, it's a one-year lease, if you look in the lease agreement, both parties have the right to terminate the lease, okay?
The first year.
And after the first year.
So, so in other words, what you're saying is?
If it doesn't work out?
Or if we don't want them to be there for the next year at that rate, we can go up?
But it gets us to closing.
I'm with it.
All right? It gets us to closing, because we, we agreed, as you know, in January of two thousand twelve to do it. Uh, any other... Any other questions regarding this particular item?
No question, Mayor. Just a statement, though, that we are gaining something with this tenant. I mean, it's...
Yeah, they serve the community.
They serve the community and they're servicing this, this piece of property. And there again, I think we, we talked about that when we took on the center, that, that we would have those in there and would, we're basically the next one on the agenda here.
That's correct. So, with that being said, at this time, I would, once again, I would entertain a motion, oh, I'm sorry, I do have that motion on the floor by Mr. Perkel and seconded by Mr. Hewlett to approve the lease agreement for the SBDC for one-year lease agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And please note for the record, Councilman Tyra was the naysayer. And now, let's move on to part number two. Entertain a motion to approve an affiliation agreement with Tarleton State University. And, and this is the one that covers that person you just referred to. It's a, it's a one-year commitment, once again, to retain the services of Joel Back, who is currently serving them. Uh, let me see if I can get down to that section of that. The city shall provide an employee with, shall provide the employee with adequate office location. The city shall be responsible for the expense of providing utility service at the employee's office. Uh, will provide voice and data, uh, once, once we're able to. Until such time, Tarleton State University will still continue to provide him with voice and data. The city will, uh, maintain safe, safety measures, provide the employee with standard janitorial service. City manager will wind up being the liaison person with Joel Back, and Joel Back will service the liaison for the university. The, uh, Joel is going to wind up being provided by the university as a one full-time employee to work at the center for some, for forty hours per week, starting in June 1. He will actually be, continue as a member of staff for the university. He will not be a city employee. The university shall be responsible for provision for, uh, the telephone and data service until said time that the city takes it over. The employee shall plan, schedule, oversee various programs, events, activities sponsored or produced by the university. And to that effect, Mr. Back will actually plan and coordinate this along with, I guess, Shanna, who would be overseeing any kind of events that are scheduled into that location. It, would it be Shanna? And so, Shanna and Joel will work hand in hand on the scheduling of university-sponsored events. And they're going to continue to bring to our community those type of events that we have grown accustomed to. The plan is not to slide back and, and go back strictly to not having any kind of university programs available on the site. In fact, they're encouraging the cooperation between the city and the uni, university to continue the artistic programs that they have here. It's a great way for the art students and the music students at the university to have a venue to showcase themselves. What better place than Granbury, Texas? So, there's, there's just certain things that we need to weigh, weigh out on this contract. This is part two. Once we get past both of these approvals, there is no more negotiation that needs to be done with Tarleton State University or the Texas A&amp;M system. We can move forward. Once again, I want to remind you, it's a one-year agreement for them to place a liaison person onsite to help with the coordination. If they want to continue it, that's within their budget to do so, but it's not contingent upon us and the title transfer of the property. And, and, uh, city manager states that they don't expect to extend it for over one year or so. But this is sort of like a, a little bridge between the transition. And we can still coordinate even after one year with, uh, whoever they, uh, determine to be the liaison for this kind of a project, for ongoing projects in the future. So, with that being said, I'd entertain a motion to approve an affiliation agreement with Tarleton State University for the said employee. We have a motion by Mr. Perkel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Parsons.
The university will provide one full-time employee forty hours a week beginning June 1, 2012, uh, continuing for so long as the possession, uh, position is authorized by the university. I, I, I've seen nothing in this agreement that says it's a year-long or it could be, it could be one month or it could be in perpetuity.
Well, I've been assured, just, just so you understand, I was assured by the president of Tarleton State University that this would just be a one-year, a one-year thing. And, and we have, uh, Janice, I believe you're their liaison. Can, can you speak on this matter to answer that question if you don't mind? Hello, Janice, if you would, state your name, your address.
My name is Janice Morok. I'm at 1202 Crawford Court here in Granbury. Um, actually, this is, there is no set ending date for that person. We're totally committed through the end of our fiscal year, two thousand, uh, of August 2013. And as we evaluate, we'll know, um, as of May or June 2013 to continue. At this point, I don't see that that's interruption in our budget, um, for Mr. Back or as long as he continues to stay to do this, as long as it's, the city's fine with that, uh, with that agreement. So, it's not...
Oh, I was under the impression that y'all weren't going to go past one year.
Well, I think that's what we're, we're stating, but I don't think that it's not, it's not necessarily something that wouldn't continue depending on our budget situation and the agreement with the city.
Okay.
But as far as you know, it would get us through to August 2013.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, would, would, I know I second the motion, but after hearing you, what you're saying there, and then it's not written that way like Mr. Mickey here said, but can we add that to this contract that it'll be paid for one year? And then maybe we give them the same option we did on the first part where they get an option to renew it with both parties agreeing, we'll do it.
I wouldn't mess with anything right now to go back with OCG, OGC, but I'm, I'm just saying that I, I think that there's a diff, uh, that there's a total commitment. But as, with the university, there's always that one-year type of thing unless you're tenured.
Well, it doesn't say it in here, and I didn't read that part of it, and, uh, I'd want to pull my motion on it if it's open-ended.
Mr. Allen, I'll just, I'll just say this. This contract is a result of four months of negotiations with Tarleton and Texas A&amp;M. It's been blessed by everybody and it's always been our understanding that because of, from talking to Dr. Richardson and Tarleton, that their budget is, goes year to year and that any given year, they may not fund the position any longer, at which point the contract would terminate. But if they do want to fund the position, at least when city manager and I were talking to them, it was our, we wanted to welcome him there to help coordinate activities at the center.
As long as it's, it's an agreement. That's what the affiliation agreement is about.
To, to amend the agreement now would mean I'd have to go back to Texas A&amp;M and who knows how long that would take.
You know, one of, counselor, I, I agree with what you're saying, but here's the deal that I, I look at. If, if we don't put something in there, let's say a year from now, they don't have the money, say y'all don't, then we don't have a problem. Let's say they do have the money and we decide that we want to move our tourist board down there or welcome, you know, some of our committee or TV station into that building. We don't have a choice then, do we?
Uh, the only thing we have to provide that employee with is an office space.
It doesn't specifically say where.
It doesn't say where. He could be in the Rock House.
Mayor, under my, under my understanding, this whole thing, though, is what is, I mean, we thought it was going to be a year, even if it wasn't a year, this person was put in there to let us get ourself set up in a position to have somebody manages or have something manage, whether it be our weather college, college people or whether it be our, uh, our, our staff people, whatever we have put in there, that gives us the opportunity. So, what we need to do is look at right now what we're going to do because we are going, he is going away real soon, I mean, within a year. Am I correct in saying that? I mean, I mean, we should, we should look at it that way.
Well, we know that the budget, the fiscal budget for the university has him, his salary in the budget.
Right.
Through to 2013.
Yes. And our fiscal year budget is September 2012 to August 2013.
Right.
That's all we can guarantee.
Yeah.
What would the council do come a year from now or two? We don't have the money to, to cover the debt on this. Then what would we do? Can't sell it.
There is no debt on it.
What debt?
You're not paying him anything.
Well, you're going to have to pay upkeep on it, Mayor. You're going to have to pay last...
That's not a debt. That's, that's regular maintenance, so, you know.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't go into debt on there.
Are you talking about hiring somebody?
Yeah, hiring somebody or we had to come in and, and say, we know what's going to cost us a hundred and fifty, I think we budgeted for it verbally, a hundred and fifty-two-hundred thousand a year. I mean, y'all, I love the college and all that stuff, but it's kind of like their way or the highway.
Well, but now you're getting off target of as to what we've got here. What we've got here is we've got this portion of it that has to do with the full-time employee being provided by Tarleton State University.
And you're going to stand it, leave it open, not a one-year deal like y'all thought you were going to?
No, it, I mean, it's whatever that agreement says, Stuart. What does it say?
It said...
Continuing for so long.
It says that you stay there until the university funds the position.
And as, and as you're saying, that's a one-year deal. Is the arts review in this year's budget?
Hours?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a university event, so we would, that is not a city event.
But I mean, it is, it is in the university's budget and Mr. Back will be having it there.
Yes, that's already scheduled.
So, we'll have the, we'll have the poet laureate under the tree again, all that.
Yes.
I mean, this is more of a coordinating effort position. It, it's a liaison position. It's a transitional position. We, we got to understand that at some point, that position will go away.
It saves the taxpayer money, too.
Initially...
I'm not, I'm not grapping about it.
Right.
Want to make sure we had our inside up and they don't come back a month and a half a month.
No, this, this, once we agree on this, this is the last nail in that coffin and the trial transfer will take place from what I am understanding. These are the last two items that have been placed upon the table for us to clarify and get off the table. And if we do so, closing will occur August 1.
Can I call the question?
Or maybe sooner.
Call the question.
I need a second on a call for the question. We've got a second by Mr., uh, Hewlett, thank you. All in favor of the motion which was laid on the table? Did you, I never heard you actually say you were pulling your motion.
No, no, I didn't.
Okay. All right. It's hard to keep up sometimes, folks.
Eric, can I clarify since you...
Hang on just a second. I, at this time, we have a, a call for the question on a mo, and, uh, I need to vote on that. All in favor of the call for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, we're calling for the question. This time, we have a motion on the floor to approve an affiliation agreement with Tarleton State University to provide said employee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Once again, we have one nay and please note for the record that was Councilman Tyra. Moving us to item number, oh, by the way, that motion carries.
Mayor, may I say something for just a moment?
Uh, yes, Ms. Morok.
I just want to say thank you very much. Um, there are a lot of people in this community who appreciate this and really want this to take place and will be supportive of the city and the functions that go on there.
Thank you. And we're looking forward to continued relationship with Tarleton State University. All right, bringing us down to item number nine, consider and approve a second amendment to the memorandum of agreement with Four Star USA Real Estate Group. Council members, back in 2009, the city of Granbury entered into a memorandum of agreement with Four Star as part of Plaza Drive condemnation. Uh, in the original MOA, the city agreed to construct, uh, some pumps and water pipes that would deliver affluent water to the Harbor Lakes Golf Course from our sewer treatment plant located there on Harbor Drive. And, uh, as such, uh, 2010, the parties agreed to amend the agreement. This, this gave both city and Four Star time to finish the construction of the piping necessary for the affluent distribution throughout the golf course. Once the city completed the construction and we are at the point now to where we are actually delivering affluent water to Four Star on a daily basis. However, this month, uh, Four Star contacted the city and they requested a desire to receive at least one million gallons of affluent per day because the affluent, uh, produced by the plant fluctuates from day to day. The city may not always be able to deliver one million gallons of affluent per day. And as such, that portion of the agreement was sort of left vague. It did not spell out the amount of gallons. It did allow for this Four Star Group to purchase lake water from the city for an amount of nineteen cents, and I got to correct your packet, it is not nineteen cents per gallon, but it's nineteen cents per thousand gallons. It makes a big difference. So, it's nineteen cents per thousand gallons for, under which Four Star could purchase lake water from the city if they needed supplemental water. In a showing of good faith, the city manager and city attorney have sort of negotiated a compromise, and that's what's in your packet that would have permit them to take supplemental lake water free of charge over the next three years. After the three-year period, the city would still not routinely provide the one million gallons because, as I said, the sewage affluent fluctuates. It's not always at a million gallon capacity to where it can be, uh, stated on a per-day basis. Based upon the usage and the flushing of the commodes, it, it varies the amount of sewage affluent that's available, plus the processing of the affluent. It has to go through a certain amount of processing before it can be released from the treatment plant. But should the Four Star, after three years on this contract agreement, need to purchase supplemental lake water, it would be at nineteen cents per thousand gallons as previously outlined in the 2009 agreement. Uh, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the second amendment to the memorandum of agreement with Four Star.
Mayor, before we go over motion, I mean, I've got tons of questions on it.
Well, we can ask questions. That's, I, I haven't changed the process. We've been opening the questions up right after we get the second on the motion. And, and I don't see that we've had any issues with that.
It, it's not consistent. Sometimes we talk about it, sometimes a motion's made, sometimes a motion's made, then we talk about it. We always have discussions.
I always allow for discussion. I always allow for discussion.
What if somebody's not ready? What if we want to hear a little bit before we, somebody might want to amend a motion?
Well, you can do that. You, yeah, once the motion is made and put onto the floor, a second is, is heard, then you say, I'd like to amend that motion to take this and take that. Let's edit this, edit that.
I've got lots of questions.
That's what that is.
I've got lots of questions.
Well, and we can, we can listen to the questions. I'm just trying to move us along, Councilman.
Can we approve?
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second to approve the, uh, second amendment to the memorandum of agreement. And now then, do we have any questions regarding this item?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Tyra.
Yes. When I looked over this and I went back and researched it, I saw that the first really question that pops into my mind is we had already committed in this original contract in 2009 to nineteen cents per thousand, okay? And so, now, why are we coming back here? What is the cause for this negotiation to take place?
I'll, I'll give you what I know.
Okay.
Because I've been inquiring that as well. Because what, what apparently took place in 2010 is there was a sale of the property or maybe even later than 2010, a sale of the property took place. And as part of that property exchange, somebody was informed that the city can produce a million gallons per day. Now, it's come to their attention that the city is not capable of providing a million gallons, but the facility is stating that it needs a million gallons per day.
Okay, well, then...
Just, just so you understand.
And am I correct, Counselor, that we have that, uh, you, you guys provided parcel And am I correct, Counselor, that we have that, uh, you, you guys provided parcel number one memorandum of agreement, Plaza Drive Extension Project? That's the one that was signed, uh, in 2009 by then-Major David Southern? Is that the correct December 2009?
That is the correct one, yes.
Well, did they come to the city? I'm, I'm talking to the city manager now and to, and to the counselor, and are unhappy with something, and then they're saying, hey, so we want free water? Because I think that the council then, which that was the first time I heard about it, because I'd only been to council just a few months, and I didn't really have an opportunity to, to understand it completely. But what we did agree on is 19 cents per thousand gallons. And when I went back to the charter, in section 1102 of the charter, it makes it very, very clear that we cannot give away anything for free. And I think that's why the council, council originally placed that 19 cents, uh, rate on there. So, so I'd like just to be very careful about giving anything away free to an entity, a private entity, uh, because I'm, I feel very uneasy about that, especially when we signed the agreement in 2009 that we're gonna do 19 cents per gallon. They're coming back now and amended it, saying they want three years of water before the 19 cents kicks in. And I've got some questions for Alba as well.
Councilman Tyra, let me tell you the timeline on this. 2009, the city did sign the original memorandum of agreement. You see that in your packet. The, that agreement called for the city to have the pumps installed by September of 2010, and we did not have that done. And so we signed an amendment at that point in time, I believe in August, to the First Amendment, that's also in your packet, to, to allow the city more time to complete the infrastructure construction on the property. Uh, with, within the last month, Four Star's attorney contacted me and basically presented me with some emails and some other documentation, which he believes, uh, substantiates his claim that back in 2009, he was told that he would be receiving 1 million gallons per day of affluent water, and that they would not have signed the original had they not known that they were not gonna get that amount. You are correct in saying that the original agreement does not call for a specific amount to be delivered. I do disagree a little bit with your interpretation of the charter when you say it doesn't say you can give anything away for free. It says you cannot give any utilities away for free. And because we're not talking about potable water, we're talking about raw lake water. I don't think that that would qualify as utility, as would, uh, the water service delivered to somebody's home. So.
I don't wanna get in an argument with you, potable water, because BRA charges for unpotable water every day for people that do landscaping and water, and most people live in the lake, pay that fee, and so do farmers. That's a service. Any water that they're using for landscaping on a golf course is definitely a service, and I believe that that fact should be researched before we do anything tonight, make sure we're on good, solid ground. Second of all.
I don't think I would present you an agreement if I hadn't, if I didn't feel comfortable having to research the issue.
Thank you. The, second of all, I'm, I'm really concerned about the specific amount, because when you read the details, it looks like that you made a statement, and I think it's written where somebody said we're gonna get a million dollars, they're gonna get a million gallons, uh, a day. I don't think that's written in the original agreement, and you just verified that. That's why I'd like to talk to Alba about that 2009 agreement.
Alright, and I have no problem asking Alba up, but while he's on his way up, I'd like to mention that in, in the emails of which I, I asked for copy, plus I also asked for a chart showing for days of over 1 million gallons being produced as affluent by the plant. And those days are minimal in last year, when we had such a drought condition. And I think that's part of some of the issue for a golf course, is they can only get so much water out of the plant through the existing system, irregardless of how many gallons per day the pumps are capable of producing. If you can only provide 700 or 500,000 gallons in that day, then you're limited as to what you can do. In 2011, in July, only two days where there are over a million gallons produced. In August, only four days. In October, only three days. In September, there were zero days of affluent that ranged over 1 million gallons. And, and so you can see that during a drought situation, the city can't control how many gallons of affluent that plant can produce. And much like Councilman Tyra, I have issue with whether or not we should be giving anything away when we know that we spend some $600,000 annually for the water right, for water from the BRA. And we do have an agreement that says 19 cents per thousand. And I, I'm not very good with acre-feet and conversion as to what that correlates to in, in millions of gallons per day either. So maybe you can clarify some of that, uh, as to what we're talking about? And tell me what an average is that we see through that drought of last year? Because I'm seeing very few days in which we even produced a million.
Correct, and, and to give you a little background, uh, I was actually part of that, uh, contract negotiation. And, and the reason, uh, myself and Wayne Olson, who was our city attorney, the reason we put that on there is if you look and even go back all the way back to 2009, we probably hit 1 million gallons, maybe 40%, 30% of the time. And, and that was the reason we put that, that in there, is we didn't specify. And what we did is, we said, okay, hey, we only know we're only gonna do 30% or so, so we're not gonna sit here and tell anybody, we're gonna guarantee you 1 million gallons a day. And so therefore, that's what we did, and that was part of that, that agreement. So what we did is, we knew we couldn't, and so did they. We put in the clause about, okay, well, hey, BRA will allow us to sell you water back to this, and we will sell it to you back to system rate, which is the 19 cents per thousand, which weighs out to about 62.50 per acre foot.
And much?
It's, it's 19 cents per thousand, roughly about 62.50 per acre foot, which is what we're paying currently. Um, basically.
Can you convert that to million gallons? I, I, I'm still lost in this math conversion, so.
Um, there's 325,000 gallons per acre foot. Um, so roughly, well, prime example is basically, say, 700,000 gallons. Uh, we'd be giving them almost, almost 700 acre-feet. Now, they had a contract before any of this started of only roughly about 400 acre-feet total with BRA, which they never exceeded. Currently, we're gonna double that for what we're giving them right now, that seven, even at 700,000 gallons, we're gonna double that. So one of the things, too, I would like to address is, on the, on the two emails that they were discussing.
Am, am I correct, though, in saying, uh, to, to the fact that you're pointing out that they only used 400,000 and never exceeded that?
Yes.
We don't know that for a fact, do we?
We do know that for a fact.
We do know that for a fact. Do you have BRA records?
Yes, we do have that.
And now they're asking for a million gallons per day?
Which would be equivalent to a lot more than that, roughly. That'd be, what, 365 million, so you're looking at, uh, a thousand acre-feet or so. So, yes.
So, in times ratio, what are we talking about? Four times the usage now?
About two and a half to three times more, yes.
So three times the usage is what they're requiring now of water?
What they did before, yes, sir.
Have, did they expand their golf course?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Wow.
And then one thing I did wanna point out is the two.
Is there anybody here from Four Star?
No.
They're based out of Austin.
Oh.
Are we trying to mitigate some kind of future lawsuit here, Counselor?
I think we may be.
All I'm gonna, all I'm gonna tell you is that they had expectations, um, from certain members of staff that they were gonna get a certain amount of water that's not being delivered. This is what they're saying.
I, I understand.
Um, I would like to address.
It's not about, it's, listen, I don't wanna make this about staff. Let's make sure, we got a written contract, let's go by what's written, not verbal agreement.
That's the question, I'm answering your question.
So, so you're saying that you believe there's facts out there about a staff member saying something that would drive a lawsuit?
I believe that's what they're saying.
Okay.
I would like to address that. On the two days that these emails came across, one day was 1.1 million, that was the flow. Um, and that's what we did. I have records of that. They asked me what the flows were for that day, 1.1 million. The next time they asked, I said roughly 1 million. The flows that day was 970,000, around it off. Nowhere in there was ever promised of any kind, and I believe the mayor has those as well, uh, copies of the emails. So, uh, that's what they were saying. Also, they said that because of these emails, that the agreement, back in 2009, they wouldn't have done it. Well, again, if you look at the date, it's 2011, 2010 of the emails.
Just help me out here, 'cause it, ma, maybe I don't get it, but I gotta ask a simple question. You know, y'all gave us all these notes, researched everything, and, you know, we even went back to the charter. Uh, and, and I know that there was talk, and the counselor made it clear that, that, hey, you can give water away if it's affluent, it's not, if it's not, if it's non-potable. Is that correct?
Well, what that was, was that was in lieu of, and you can do that.
In lieu of?
Correct, 'cause basically what we did is, it was part of the agreement for the Plaza Drive, I think.
Because we, I want everybody to know, we purchased a piece of property to open up Plaza Drive.
Yes.
And that's, and so we didn't give away anything, that was a, a trade-off.
That was part of that, it was part of the trade-off, yes.
So how does this become separate than that?
Um, yeah, I guess it, well, it would be separate from that.
That's right. We're not buying street anymore. We're not buying, we've already got that took care of. That's why we gave away that water, and that's not a giveaway, that's a trade. Now we're being asked to give away a complete, free, and they're saying, but the reason we're doing this, the reason we're asking y'all to give it away is because, is, is to give it to us, is because somebody said something verbally that's not in the contract, and you hadn't, and you hadn't got it to us quick enough. You're, you're providing a 700,000 instead of a million or something to that thing.
Yes.
And I don't see that written in the contract that we have to provide a certain quantity. And that's where I'm struggling with this, Counselor.
And no, sir, and that was never in there. And again, the reason for that is kind of what the mayor, and, and I had a chart that goes back three years. And, and again, I mean, you're not gonna guarantee something, or you're even gonna imply that we can do 1 million guaranteed, because we can't. We're only doing that about 30% of the time.
I'm, I read the emails, and, and it infers that we have the capability, basically, of providing 1 million gallons per day. The pumps are actually capable of producing 2 point some odd million gallons of flow. But that doesn't say that they were producing.
No.
2 point something million gallons.
Mayor, you notice those emails were written after the signature of the agreement. So anything that came after that in emails doesn't have anything to do with that agreement. The fact is, the max, I agree with you, if you operate max, we're there, but we don't operate max all the time.
Well, we also stated in there that they're entitled to all, uh, first right of refusal for all affluent from the plant. And, and they have the purchase option from, uh, the river. So I, this one, this one throws up a red flag, because when I read an email that's dated July 22 of 2011, and, and it's talking about, I hope this is acceptable for your buyer, it's making me think that somebody is negotiating a sale of something and basing it on some promise of water. Uh, I mean, it, in an open government kind of setting, I'm sitting here reading an email that basically says that.
After the contract was signed, that there was some correspondence between somebody at our city and them. Yeah, I, I hear you. And we, can I ask a question, Mayor, to Alba, please?
Certainly, Mr. Allen, go ahead, state your question.
The chart here, that's a gallon, right?
Yes, sir, that is in gallons, million gallons is what that's in.
You take 20, uh, 2011, and one, two, three, three days was over a million. Correct. Take all those together and divide them by 12, that's 963,000 gallons of water.
You're saying for an average?
Yeah, for your average.
Yes, on average, okay.
Yes. Okay, they're asking for a million gallons is what they want total per day. So we're pretty close, even last year, in a drought, we're, we're real close.
Well, but not during.
But not, yeah, not, not.
The problem is.
How much did they get?
Uh, how much did they get out of that?
Yes.
Roughly about 7 something, 700, 800,000.
So they're about 300,000, so, yeah, okay.
And that's on a daily basis? If you remember, it's, they're wanting it every day guaranteed 1 million.
I don't see how we go back and negotiate a contract with eight years old, of where old it was. But, but here's the deal, Alba.
Yes, sir.
We put, I believe I put it, $135,000 worth of pumping.
We put, uh, actually, we paid for the, the right-of-way, which was, I believe, anywhere from 135, 140,000 dollars. Then we paid for the engineering for the pumps and the, uh, the piping and all that, which was another 58,000, I believe. Then was another 70,000 in the pumps, plus we pay all the electricity and all the cost of maintenance.
We pay the electrical per day. If I figured it out, it was around half a million dollars right there we spent, all that 400 and something thousand. But I, I really have a problem with it, because we ration our own people here in our city with water one day, two day, or three day a week, you know? Correct. So here we are, giving, selling them water, it costs, which is getting their money back. But the golf course is nice, it brings the revenue to the city. But what I don't understand is, unless this is part of their deal when they sold it, they were guaranteed 1 million gallons a day. Do we have a meter that that water that we pumped out of the lake to them?
We do.
And it'd be metered?
Yes, we, we do have a meter actually down, I believe it's, uh, 14.
And it only comes in to them?
Yes.
Direct from the lake?
Yes, goes back up to one of the ponds up there.
It didn't go anywhere else? So, and that's where they wanna put it in the pond?
I believe so. That's, that's on the, no, that's on the, uh, the raw water. The affluent comes all the way across, and I think they just, they dump it up top, I believe, in one of the ponds up there. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's what they have to do. Plus, we also have to do the testing on it, we have to also do the monitoring on it as well. We also have to do the TCQ testing, uh, and turn in for the lab work and so forth on that.
And the 19 cents is good for what, three more years or seven years?
Uh, the 19 cents, the way it's set up right now in the contract, it's, that stays that way, except for when the system rate changes. So for example, if BRA comes back and they charge us next year, you know, say $65 per, then it'll break down per thousand, and then it'd be more.
So our agreement with them is to sell it to them whatever it costs us?
Correct. That's what the, that's what the contract is.
For a period of 10 years from the date of the contract, which was 2009, through to 2019.
And we're providing as much water to them right now as we can under our current, under the agreement that was signed in 2009 and amended again in 2010? Yes, sir, we are.
Do you understand, Stuart, that, is your understanding that we're doing everything we say we're doing in the contract right now?
Yeah, I don't think that we're in breach of the contract. What this is, is this was a goodwill gesture that the city manager and I negotiated with them to try to help them out, because they're struggling out there at, at Harbor Lakes. And if you don't wanna pass the agreement, that's fine, don't pass it. I mean, we're in compliance with the original, which is something that Wayne and I tried to do to help them.
Whenever y'all mentioned lawsuit, well, though, I didn't know if.
I nev, I never said that there was gonna be a lawsuit. I just said that they booked, they were under the impression that they were gonna give you 1 million gallons per day. And they, they claimed they got that impression from staff.
Well, and I said that would be fact for a lawsuit, and I think you agree with that.
You did say.
I don't, I don't think that there's any pending lawsuits.
Okay, well, let me, like, so what are we trying, are we trying to provide more to them? I mean, what's the guts of this? They want more water, obviously.
I just told you. They came to us, they're asking for help, they helped us out when we didn't have our pumps installed in 2010, so this was a goodwill gesture that the city manager and I offered up. If the council doesn't wanna ratify it, that's fine, vote against it, we'll, we'll figure out something.
And it's owned by a different company than it was back then?
No, it's not, it's still owned by Four Star.
Same company, same company.
And they helped us with Plaza, I mean, you know, there were some landowners who didn't help us at all. This particular person worked with us, helped us get the Plaza.
And they still got the billboard sitting on the side of the road up there.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different entity.
Okay, well, I, I wanna address this, I'm with you, Counselor, and, and Mayor, so just, let's just cut this right to the chase. We had an agreement in 2009. What do they wanna change from the 2009 agreement? Just break that, make it real simple for us. What do they wanna change from the 2009 agreement?
They want the right to additional water from the Brazos River or Granbury Lake.
Okay.
For three years at no charge.
And then they will pay us 19 cents?
After the three years, they would wind up compensating us for that water at 19 cents per thousand, or at the going rate.
And right now, what do we sell on that water for if they want that lake water?
19 cents.
That's correct. So that's my point.
So we're talking three years, 19 cents. Providing them some average of 300,000 gallons, is that correct?
It'd be per day, yes, 300,000 gallons per day, which would be almost an acre foot a day if you wanna go that route.
And I'm glad my colleagues are discussing this, 'cause this is a very serious issue. We're talking about utilities again, and I'm concerned, when you say they're having a tough time, we negotiated that land deal under a condition of taking that property, and they got a lot for it. You brought out the money that was spent, Mr. Allen, doing all those pumps and the routine maintenance we do now to keep that up. I'm really concerned about favoring another private entity again, okay? With, with water coming out of the lake that belongs to us. We sold some downstream for $500,000 here, here, what, a year or so ago. Again, when these other people and businesses are hurting too, so, so I, I can't support giving anybody any free water.
Mayor, I make a motion.
Hank, Hank, we already have a motion, I believe, and we have a second to approve it. Uh, Councilman Hewlett, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I love to play golf out there, I play out there all day. Those, those fairways are great, I mean, I wanna keep them that way, but the, the thing is, why would we go into a three-year contract and not just a year-to-year contract? Because as we know, or as we hope would happen, the population would increase, and we would be able to produce more each year of the wastewater to, to maybe at one ti, at one point, be able to produce more each year of the wastewater to maybe at one time, at one point, get to where the agreement is settled, and there would be no selling of lake water. I mean, is that a true statement? I mean...
You would assume, yes.
So why wouldn't we just go on a year-to-year basis with them, instead of going into a three-year contract? Stuart, are you going to...
They wanted six. I counted one, settle in the middle.
Well, let's go with one, then.
I think if you look at the, a lot of people are saying 19 cents per thousand. The dollar amount is 50 bucks a day. What, what, is what it amounts to?
Well, let me test them. You add that up, add up 50 dollars a day, 365 dollars a day. You want to give that away to that private?
I still got the floor here, Mitch. I still got the floor. But first of all, though, I mean, do we monitor how much water they actually use? I mean, there's a lot, there's, I live there, I know. They water when it's raining.
They do.
They do, yeah.
They do. We do. We have a meter that actually monitors anything that goes out of that wastewater plant. We have to.
So if we're going to go into this contract, we're going to, we're going to be the good steward, or work with them, they should work with us also and say, okay, we're going to start using the water wisely to keep this, you know, and I agree, it takes a lot of water, it takes a lot of water to keep a top-notch golf course. There's no sense of having a golf course if it's not that way, you know, so. You know, I just, I think we could have put some things in place, the one year possibly, the monitoring of the water, things like that, and come to an agreement there, because that sounds like we're close.
And with that being said, you bring to mind something else that popped into my head, and that was whether or not there's some sort of a recycling effort, a conservation effort on their part to conserve their water usage and reutilize what water is running off. Is there a retention pond downhill from where the water is pumped to, that they actually pump back up to the top?
They have several. I don't know how they, how they do their maintenance or whatever. I mean, they have several ponds down there. Now, yeah, you would assume that they would either pump up, and maybe they have something, I don't know, but some kind of recirculated pump where they can reuse that water.
But see, it begs, begs me to the question of, hey, if we're getting free water, why do we need to bother? I mean, water is a precious commodity.
That's what's happening here.
Precious, precious commodity out there, and people are blind to it, left and right. People are blind to it. They think just because they've got a lake out there, they're...
Mayor, that's why I'm saying, let's put some restrictions on their end of it, to make them good steward.
Some additional language is what you're suggesting. And with that being said, this is where you can make some amendments to the agreement. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I hear, I hear what, what Councilman Hewlett's saying, so I'd like to ask Hewlett a question concerning, we pay BRA for that water every year that's in the lake, to the tune of about 600,000. What's it come to, 60 dollars acre feet, was it? Okay. How can we justify, as public officials, giving them that water for one, even one year, when our utility fund's in tough shape, even if it's 50 dollars a day, add that up, and there is some incentive to give them that other water, that they get free onto that agreement? We're coming back and making a sweeter deal here, any way you want to look at it, and our utility fund's in bad shape, people are paying too much for water out here, and so if we do this, this sets a bad precedent. I'm saying, please don't do it, colleagues. Please vote no against this.
So right now, I want to remind you where we're at, council members, because we've had a lot of discussion. We have a motion on the floor to approve the second amendment to the memorandum of agreement with Four Star Real Estate Group as it is presented. This time would be the time that you would want to spell out any modifications or amendments to the agreement. Well, we just heard from the counselor that they wanted six, counter was one, settle in the middle to three. But I'm like Councilman Hewlett stated, why not put some teeth into it that sort of justifies that they have some onus in this? I mean, they, basically, it says that the city's going to, there's one section in here that says, "In order to maximize efficiency of the Granbury wastewater treatment plant, Four Star may adjust the pump schedules in coordination with the plant superintendent." Otherwise, I don't see anything that says they need to do anything. It's all on to the city to provide them with more water, either through the lake water or through the effluent. I heard they were even upset that we were watering and trying to maintain the facility at the sewer treatment plant. So, you know, and there is some maintenance and operation of effluent that's utilized at the plant itself, so they're wanting every bit of what's entitled to them.
And the part of that is that they, they went through a drought last year, and I...
We all went through that same drought.
I played on that golf course last year when they weren't getting that water, because it was under the construction, all right? I mean, they were, there was times when they weren't getting any of the water, because it was, it was under the construction and putting in pumps, putting in the pipes, and threw that up a few times. But still, that course stayed fairly green. It really did, in the drought season. I played on it. So I, I agree with what you're saying. I agree with what I'm hearing, is that they, they're getting the water, and now they know they're getting the water, so they're just watering all the time. Overwatering, basically.
I think the way to get it cut down is, is not to do this deal tonight. I bet they'll serve a lot more, you know, take that freedom. And I will say this, too, that I have seen their irrigation going out there, Mayor, you were talking about it. Most of them do run towards, throw towards the ponds. They do. But like Alva said, we've all drove by there, even in our own yards sometimes.
Shooting it on the road.
When it rains, it rains.
Shoot it on the road.
All right, let's get on with the question, then. We have a motion on the floor to approve the second amendment to the memorandum of agreement with Four Star Real Estate. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion is denied.
Mayor, may I ask a question there?
Yes.
We can still take this back to negotiations with the different rights?
Definitely. It can always go back again. And I would hope that we can try to figure out some good faith effort on both parties to monitor and maximize the water usage to where we don't see a waste of precious commodity.
As, as we would do at a residential.
Sure.
You know, Mayor, we might even do it where if it is one year free, there accurately be like 29 cents a acre foot, or gallon.
Well, that's for a future discussion.
You saw him standing, that way they'll really tighten the belt up.
All right, so let's move on to item number 10. Consider and approve a resolution supporting the appointment of Judge Roger Harmon to the Regional Transportation Council of the North Central Council of Governments for